All right, well, six o'clock for our Sandy City Council work session to order. I'm gonna go ahead and do a quick review of our Sandy City Council meeting. Agenda for later this evening. Per usual, I will pause for any questions you may have for either myself or for staff. First, we will jump in. We will be asking for any changes to the agenda. Councilor Walker, let me just show how it proposed change to the agenda. For the same net business ICA with Blackmanus County's broadband exchange. She believes there's still a lot more information that we need. She'll let her make the argument at that time for it. Be ready for a little bit of a conversation as to whether or not we should take that item up on tonight's agenda. After making requests for changes to the agenda, I will apologize to see that it's our little odd tonight. I'll be going to public comment. Jeff, did we have anyone sign up for public comment online?
No, we did not.
And we had any turned in for today?
Not yet.
Well, then go to our consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda, we have our Sandy City Council meeting minutes from August 60. Are any questions on those? Under new business requests for assignment for heavy disposal franchise, any questions for that tonight? Funding, that's just a discussion.
Yeah, we have it.
Fund exchange agreement for Highway 26, 10th to Vista Loop pedestrian improvement project. Say oldie but a goodie. Guaranteed maximum price proposal for package two for the existing wastewater treatment plant improvements. And then Sandy Net Business IGA with Clackamas broadband exchange. We'll then go to our report from our city manager, then our committee and council reports. With that, let's go ahead and start off our council work session this evening. I'll let Jordan kick us off, but it's on our America Rescue Plan Act funding priorities. With this $2.4 million, I always get it wrong in the decimal. Jordan, am I right finally on that?
Even more, 2.5.
2.5, I was 2.8 last time, so we're getting closer.
Yeah, we use the new census information, maybe it would be a little bit more, but Tyler Deans is gonna do the presentation and walk through some of these. I think options that we've put together, and I think the purpose of tonight, and the reason why we have this work session down on the floor tonight is to have kind of an open conversation about ARPA. What the criteria is and what the interim rules say about how we could use the ARPA funds. And then some of the ideas that we've kind of generated at staff level, but also hearing from council priorities and where council poles might align with how we can use these ARPA funds. I mean, the good news is $2.5 million over the next year, and there's a lot of broad, I think, eligibility in terms of what we can actually spend it on. So we've gathered it up, some of these ideas, again, kind of consistent with our council's goals. And that are consistent with what we think credit tier and rules say around the funding. And then we're just eager to hear kind of your ideas too. Some of these seem like a priority that we would modify our budget this year for versus maybe tabling for the next tranche. And then this also leads into our Sandy Urban Renewal Board meeting that follows this work session. One of the, the options has to do with those covered structures or gazebos or any other better name that we're willing to take at this point for that very successful program. So Tyler, let's go ahead and kind of roll through the staff report and present these different options.
I'm so sorry to interrupt, but Jeff, are we making sure that participants on Zoom and watching, I just know Rich may be logging on at any time, so we want to keep in mind.
I'm sure to keep an eye on.
Jordan, sorry.
Yeah.
Any questions? Just you kicked off kind of based on what I was talking about there. Any measures up on the census? Will our number change based on the new census numbers or?
These are.
Based on census numbers?
My understanding is that these are locked in, so we got the first tranche now it's in our, in account, and then 12 months from now we're gonna get that second.
If that changes, we'll pass.
Yeah, please do.
All right, so Jordan already touched on a couple of these points, but I'll just reiterate quickly. America Rescue Plan Act was passed in March of 2021, just over $2.5 million is the city's share of that in two tranches. Received the 1.26 million about two weeks ago. And the biggest sort of overarching thing that we need to keep an eye on with this is the expense date of any sort of reimbursement or purchase of anything new. So it has to be after March 3rd of this year. And we have to have it obligated or appropriated within the budget by December 31st of 2024 and actually spend the money in its entirety by December 31st, 2026. And eligible uses, as Jordan indicated, there is a wide range of potential uses with a lot of flexibility within these four categories. So the first is public health and economic impacts, essentially just responding to the public health emergency or the pandemic. Second option is premium pay for eligible workers during the COVID-19 pandemic. Third is replacing lost revenue from our own sources, and we'll go into what all of these will look later. And then fourth is investments in infrastructure, which includes water, wastewater, broadband services.
Including, are you gonna include a kind of, what, except an eligible worker?
We don't really have a slide on that, because we're not proposing any premium pay at this point in time, but I can go into that right now just to answer your question.
Just, yeah, real quickly.
Yeah, so it has to be specific categories of employees that work during the pandemic. One of the key components is tracking when they were actually in a situation where they would be eligible for premium pay. So if you weren't able to maintain social distancing, if you were required to work in an environment that made you more susceptible to contracting COVID. And so one of the biggest issues that we ran into here, just from an initial standpoint, is that we never tracked when our employees were within sixty of each other. We did our best to maintain social distancing, you know, for anyone that was in the office or in the library, for example. But we don't have a way, didn't have a way at the time, and don't have a way now to recreate those time sheets to see who was, quote unquote, in a situation where they may have been susceptible.
Now, I have no, I have no memory as to what community this was. I just have this odd memory of a mayor out of here is. Well, what our community is going to do, but they mentioned that they were going to provide like some COVID relief dollars stuff around my like grocery works and stuff in our community during that time. So is that like an eligible expense on something like?
I think that would probably fall more into the option one, economic impact of public health, and have it to be a business grant for those.
So an eligible worker, do you think that's a municipal employee? I'm just trying to figure out that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So whether fire, police, here at City Hall, those that's kind of eligible municipal. And are we reimbursing ourselves for that kind of, for having to pay back premium pay or?
We didn't, we didn't do premium pay, so this would be.
It's a, you know, it would be an entirely new program. Could be a taxable benefit.
Thank you.
So we've identified seven potential projects with these funds. The first is business recovery grants. We know that was success, the first two rounds that we did. That made, you know, pretty big impact for some of our local businesses and heard from council members how, you know, there may be an need for some sort of new business recovery program to be implemented, whether it's a extension of what we already have in place, we're developing a new program. Jordan indicated we could reimburse ourselves for the gazebo's recovered structure program. There's also been some discussion around homelessness response with the RP specifically, and that is identified within the guidelines as an eligible expense. There's also some Sandy expansion opportunities, which would fall in line with the infrastructure improvements. The library bookmobile, which came up, I believe, during the budget process at one point in time. Counselor Walker is probably very familiar with this option, since there was a grant that the library went out for earlier this year, but was unsuccessful in paying that grant funding for that purchase. Revenue replacement, which would essentially fall within the general fund, and we'll go over what that looks like here in a little bit, and then water, wastewater infrastructure. So jumping right into business recovery grants, the interim final rule, and you'll hear me refer to that probably a lot throughout this presentation, since that's the guidelines we're working off of. Allows for grants or loans to mitigate financial hardships, declines in revenue impacts, periods of business closure by supporting payroll costs, helping retain employees, assisting mortgage or utilities costs, and other operating expenditures that may have arisen. We allocated as part of our CARES Act funding earlier this year, $219,000 to businesses, including the Chamber of Commerce, in two different rounds of emergency business grants that we titled them at that point in time. There was a review panel, I believe, Counselor Pete Lee were on that. Review committee.
Question, was that ARPA funds or was that?
That was the CARES Act, so separate, separate funding source, yep.
Follow up to that is, it originally came out of our urban renewal fund, and it's what gave us the idea that these are for covered structures for that reimbursement. Didn't, but that was kind of the question. We did follow up and reimburse our urban renewal fund that paid those CARE Act dollars.
Yep, so we had about $350,000 in CARES Act funding. We had some allocation for urban renewal a little bit in general, but we reimbursed ourselves with the first round and then did a second round strictly out of the general fund and reimbursed ourselves with the CARES Act funding as well. So we've been made whole for this $219,000 that has been expended thus far.
Question.
Yes.
Mortgage and rent. Creation of a mortgage. Forgiveness, how effective is that more? Also, their mortgage.
So with this first category of eligible expenditures, this would be specifically, well, if we went the route that this is described here, it would be specifically for businesses. What we've done in the past, if we utilize the same methodology we've done in the past, it's really just tell us you've had a hardship, give us a little bit of a narrative, and then you're awarded the grant if you're eligible. You could use it for your mortgage or rent if you had, you know, past due payments due or utilize it for something else. We did not, you know, track or audit those expenditures. We took this as a reward of what they were gonna use those funds on and hope they use them appropriately.
In other words. Would a business, I'm sorry, would a bin, would a multifamily unit complex count as a business or as a residential?
You could possibly make the argument that it would be a business. Many of them, they should have a business license because they're operating for a profit. That said, we have the capacity to create our own guidelines around whatever program we implement. So if we don't want to include multifamily businesses or, you know, apartment owners, we can exclude certain.
And counsel, I, I'm not fully sure why I asked the question, kind of, yeah. This is, I think some of us may remember when Mike Walker was in and we were talking about the doing some mortgage rent utility, you being a utility relief after wastewater, that there was some multifamily complexes and stuff here in town that didn't qualify or we just procedurally had a hard time finding out a way to get those tenants relief, right? That's why I stayed away. So I remember there was a problem with that, and that's why I posed that question is, is that, is this maybe a means of solving that?
So part of that problem that you're, that I think you're referring to is our utility assistance program was specific towards someone that has a City of Sandy utility account, and many of our renters or people that live in a manufactured home don't have a City of Sandy account. They have a master account, and then that landlord bills out to the tenants. And so that was the issue that we ran into with the utility programs. We didn't have an account to provide a discounted rate to. So I guess to follow up then on, on your question, we could explore options to provide families assistance. It would be, it would require some more research than what we have readily available right now. And the reason I say that is because we don't have a way to, at least currently, track which one of those accounts individually are past due, because the landlord is staying current with us. So it would be that second step of identifying.
I appreciate that, and maybe it'll percolate up in conversation. I just wanted to have an understanding in case it's what council went in our conversation. Yes. Well, two, two questions. One is this work session, it's a bit useful, okay. I'm really excited about the first part of it, and I know a lot of times we end up spending better than half our time in the presentation mode. So possible that we can get to the presentation.
Yeah.
broader discussion.
Yep, and to your point, I will just add, we're in no way, shape, or form requesting that we allocate all 1.2 million tonight. This is generating ideas. We can circle back at any other time, you know. So we could, to close this item out, either expand the existing program or develop a new program, and there is a draft attached to the staff report this evening for a new program. A second option would be the gazebo and covered structures program. Specifically allows for physical plant changes to enable social distancing, et cetera. Exist or currently the Sandy Urban Renewal Agency provided financial assistance, paid for 100% of the development of those gazebo's. Eighty percent is their renewal share, 20% was passed on to the individual business. All of them have taken the option of doing a three-year low interest loan to repay that 20%. If we were to explore or move forward with the option of reimbursing urban renewal for the 80% that we have incurred, that would cost approximately $440,000 to do that. And as Jordan indicated earlier, we're gonna talk about covered structures during the urban renewal meeting later this evening. But there are some businesses outside of the urban renewal district that may want a cover structure, and so the council could look at allocating an additional amount of money for non-urban renewal businesses looking to have a covered structure installed. Number three is homelessness response, and so part of the guidelines allow for us to build stronger communities through investments in housing and neighborhoods. This option is, it would require some more work, to your point, Counselor Hopenson, but just sort of getting the topic rolling and having a conversation about that. We could look at, ignore this mobile point, please. Look at allocating an amount, you know, to address homelessness in our community. And, you know, the homelessness task force has been recently established and can utilize their assistance and provide determining the best use of these funds going forward. Sandy Net Expansion would be another option. This fits into the investments in broadband. And I think we're all very familiar of, or very aware, rather, of how much our internet usage skyrocketed, and we were all stuck at home doing school from home, work from home, et cetera. And it really identified a need for more reliable and faster internet speeds for a lot of people, not only in our community but around the nation, which is why this category was developed. The project must deliver upload and download speeds of 100 megabytes, which is well within the range of Sandy Net Fiber. So just on a general level, we would meet that eligibility criteria. There were eight possible expansion projects that Greg Brewster helped identify, and if we were to complete all eight of those expansion projects, I would generate a little over $100,000 in revenue per year going forward, and that's assuming just a 50% take rate in those identified areas. As you all know, we have a much higher take rate, generally speaking, so this is probably pretty conservative as to non-revenue generation.
And that's covering the vast of all reinstallation.
It's covering all of the construction costs, so there would probably be some additional equipment costs on top of that, but this is specifically getting the construction and the infrastructure to the doors of those communities.
Within our jurisdiction.
Within our jurisdiction. These are all, all eight projects that we can circle back and talk about the individual projects. We can do that now or wait as the conversation goes, but all eight of those projects are within city limits. It would cost about $449,000 to fund all of those, and in the staff report, there is a table that outlines where the locations are in the cost region of this project. So if we, if the council wanted to look at just allocating a smaller amount of money, we could pinpoint which specific neighborhoods or projects we want to fund, and we will plan to give a whole list of these projects.
I was surprised to see those things did not have an access to everything. And I'm just, you know, unclear on how everybody else gets it, the chosen ones being constructed or, I mean, that's part of my confusion.
We tried, it just, the private owner, mom and pop or corporation didn't allow us to build out when we were building out all the fiber. They just said, no, or give us money, type thing. Now they don't want it.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's, that's why they need to build that.
I would assume many didn't realize how great Sandy that would be, and oh, we have whatever internet provider they had at the time, we're fine, and now.
Or they're out of state owners.
Yeah.
Don't really care.
Absolutely. Library Bookmobile, so part of eligible expense category number one allows for evidence-based educational services and practices to address the needs of students. That's the short description. I'll save you the, the rest of that, but essentially the library bookmobile would provide internet hotspots and access to Chromebooks and printers, as well as just general technology assistance to many of our underserved population, community within City of Sandy. The cost of the bookmobile and the related expenditures for insurance and that sort of thing for the first year is just under $130,000, $129 and change. And utilizing this option would not only allow us to access some, or target rather, some specific neighborhoods within our community who don't have reliable internet, internet access or easy access to the library, but it would also help prevent some families walking down the highway or traveling, you know, through some more dangerous parts of town that don't have a sidewalk, for example, if you, you know, between town and Vista. Would allow us to go and serve that community in a better way.
That's only a job.
Yeah. That is. Coincidentally, that was not planned this evening.
You see, maintain, maintenance, so maintenance is in there, but not the cost of a bus driver.
So, thank you, good point. The library would utilize existing staff to operate this, so it wouldn't be a 40-hour a week bookmobile that's constantly driving around town. It would be utilized at city events. Other library programming that we currently do that is already existing but doesn't have the resources going with it, so we have, you know, story time at, at different locations. There's already an outreach program on Vista. And so this would be enhancing some of the services we already provide while utilizing existing staff, and so there shouldn't be any personnel.
How do you allocate the finances, almost as if it's a self-driving library?
Yeah.
Okay.
But this could be enough going all over.
It could, so I mean, I imagine it would also be utilized to service the Brooklyn District at some point as well. We are responsible for that library currently, you know. Assume that there would be some outreach potential to have programming a little bit further up the highway, but for purposes of
But our money, you're saying it's not based off us managing a library district, correct?
No.
Well, okay, right. It means a partnership, but we can talk about that and we'll see if there's any. You know, yeah. I don't, I don't see the tides of that.
Revenue replacement, so one of the categories allows us to basically replace our lost revenue. It has to be directly related towards government operations, and we're interpreting that to mean essentially services that are within the general fund. There's a couple specific areas where we saw some loss of revenue that's easy to pinpoint, transient room tax. People weren't renting rooms at the local hotel, you know, in early COVID times. We stopped charging library fines and fees during the pandemic. Traffic citations took a pretty big hit those first few months, as we weren't really stopping people for minor traffic citations. It was more egregious offenses. Clearly, recreation fees, and we didn't offer very many recreation programs for over here, senior services, and then parks fees, you know, more specifically, the reason go around to revenue that we don't want to see. Staff working on the weekends to clean that area to ensure that we could rent it out and keep it in good. Just standing.
So what, where do we currently sit with our, with our utility, you know, return fee for utility shut-offs and stuff? Where do we sit with that, and why aren't they listed on revenue replacement?
So those aren't part of the general fund, those are part of water, to our stormwater.
Yeah.
We have 33 accounts, I believe, was my last count, that are on a long-term payment plan of not to exceed 12 months. That are on the long-term payment plan are not receiving any rates for that portion right now, rate interest charges, it's just whatever their balance was due divided by 12 and billed out monthly. So for most people, that's been pretty manageable. There were a couple of accounts that had a very hefty balance, and so they accordingly have a very hefty balance that they're paying monthly right now, but we're seeing progress being made and.
Eventually get a lot of that revenue, right?
Absolutely.
Since waiving delay fees and things like that, I mean, it's either gonna be paid by ourselves or.
We place a lien on the property for every past due account, every night that isn't paid. So we have had, I believe, two homes that were rentals that were recently sold, and we ended up getting a little balance paid at the time of closing. And so that program seems to be looking pretty well at this point. But if we wanted to identify and replace lost revenue for these seven or six rather areas, it would be $213,000 to sort of make ourselves whole. And water and wastewater infrastructure, so obviously we've already talked about this, but you know, infrastructure improvements are identified as an eligible expense, could be for water or wastewater under category. The funds would count for the 80% federal funding limitation that part of the guidelines, and so there would be some analysis that needs to be done with an upay degree on how that affects things, because it would be a federal fund. Always for our project. A more immediate option would be allocating approximately $5,000 towards the FOB program and provide an incentive for the remaining 20 businesses that either have missing or inadequate scrubs. And as I mentioned, we do not recommend allocating any funds to the water improvement project, at least until this.
And there's other infrastructure packages and stuff in Congress right now. So with that, what is considered on this? Is there a prime period in which we need to utilize, and how long can we wait before he's?
So the funds have to be obligated or identified for a specific project by December 31st, 2024, and then actually extended by December 31st, 2026. We have lots of time.
That's for the whole shebang.
That's for the whole thing, yep. Which further highlights, you know, the work session tonight, but a formal decision of all 1.2 million that we have now, which is 2.5 million, that's a fair write that this evening. It's earning interest right now, not a lot, even that.
Keeping up with inflation or?
I think it's 0.58. So 0.58 was the interest rate for August, so it's not, it's not huge. And so next steps, just discussing the suggested projects that have been outlined so far this evening, and then prioritize projects, give us some new ideas that you may have. Or just, you know, hold the line for a little while and wait and see what comes up.
All right, guys. Well, one is, I just want to thank staff for your guys' work on this. It's been a great presentation. I know Tyler, it's a lot you're trying to kind of catch up on and figure out. Just really appreciate all the work you've done on. What do we think, guys?
I, so I look at these kind of things as instead of looking at all the things we could spend on, I think it's very important for our size, it's a gift. Five years ago, they didn't come on. So it's, in a lot of ways, it's a gift. And I think it's really important for us to prioritize needs as opposed to where we, there's a lot of work could on there. But a lot of those aren't needs. I think if we do that, there's some needs that I think aren't on there. For me, wastewater is a big need, but I didn't get that pegged up, get the 80%, the council gets 80%, that's not really a benefit, so that doesn't help on wastewater. Although I like to talk, that makes sense to me, you know, if you can do, it's not directly funded. Our freshwater. Exploring and come up with some alternatives and figure out whether we're going to do a home or. It costs money, and that I think is. So to me, that's gonna be a good place. I'll just go through mine, party, unless you guys can add your own. Homelessness is obviously a big deal. Everyone's concerned about it. I'm not sure it kind of amounts, we're talking about doing something substantive as opposed to spending money towards it, but the concept for me is, is right. You know, we talk to anybody in the community, and that's a big concern for community. I'm very concerned about things that are they can choose one business over another. They can choose one business over another, some of their grants program, the facilities and infrastructure, I love it, it's great, it's nice things, but. As we look forward, I really like the word equity in this and try to make. So. Rather than pick restaurants or just this niche or that niche. But even then, I think we have to ask the question. Businesses that survive, they probably don't okay, they may still be hanging on, but. You know, is that a, is that a problem to buy on this? Big by standing then because of the equity and. I like the idea of the equitable recovery and the fact that so many of those people.
Thanks, Tom. There's. Not sure I disagree with you, Don, but I'd like to focus on a little having food that. Coming down the road, and those kind of things are. Fairly obvious to me, as well as the things that are not very low penny. Mentioned home. With the I, thank everybody, I talked and said, we gotta figure out what we do. What are we gonna do with this? There's a lot of stuff that could, it's gonna be very effective, buy a bunch of hotels, building hotels. Not sure just exactly how effective. Relate to. Over the hearing from. Probably to do, but. Love to see us focusing on some of the high, the current moving proof and maybe I thought that the. Children's. Everybody, I thought. Probably knew that. Not so much saying we don't want to conserve. Businesses that are really benefited by this. Um, I'm also not sure that the bookmobile is. Lots of. Competence and giving people. Uh, one thing that I'd like to ask. Is there this particular, you know, under the infrastructure bill? Where is stormwater?
I think the definition falls under water, so stormwater, and you think that's compliant with the law.
So, I'm aware of that. Let us talk about stormwater, reducing the input into our high-end. I think there's a lot of potential. Impacting that. And last piece that I wanted to kind of bring up. All right, correct, why you chose. It's for hard-hit communities like seniors, low income, you said there were some that really did pay back. Happy numbers. They left in some kind. Failures and that.
You know. Um, I mean, that's hard to say, a lot of those people had significant balances because they didn't make a payment for sixteen months. And so it wasn't necessarily that their individual month bill was extremely high, it was, you know, cumulative of not paying for so long.
Oh, two hundred, under a hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, I mean, you know, account balance. On average is probably closer to about a hundred and fifty with Sandy net right now, um I don't have the exact number in front of me, but, you know, family of. Of four, let's say. So, to answer your question, I don't believe that we're putting them in some sort of. Difficult position going forward, um if they were eligible to apply for the uh utility assistance program, we've been pushing that information out. You know, with everyone that's passed you, because we can help cut their bill, you know, by decent chunk and change right off of that. Um, we've been doing this now for. Four months, I think, since we started doing shut offs again, um and we've only had one customer that's failed to make their payment. And ultimately ended up on the shut off list, um so everyone's able to keep up with it right now. So I don't think there's a huge need there, I don't want to say there's not a need, because I don't know everyone's, you know, current situation, but what we're doing right now is working. Um, if that changes, I'd be more than happy to, you know, bring that up and we could discuss it again, uh, you know, with a new program or something, but right now it seems like we're. Pretty good with what we're doing.
In my mind, I'm gonna put them there to prevent the world out there, some of these vendors do work the system. Payments that they didn't make were as much about wanting to make money rather than to couldn't make money. Although, it's always surprising to me, somebody. They will do everything to get caught up, give out a lot of sense of morale, both cases. Do that you gotta find that work the system. Almost. Sad, it's almost hard for me to watch the people try to make up the names.
Absolutely, you know, we, I think reinstating the shut up process was probably the best thing that we did, because those that were trying to. You know, for lack of a better term, use the system, they paid right away, oh, I have the money, I can make a payment, we'll pay it full, we'll get back on track, so. You know, there were a handful of people, as you can expect, that were doing exactly what we were just uh speaking of, Councilor Exer, but I think most of those have been. Rest and now we're just working through people that, you know, got behind, maybe were impacted by COVID. Early on, had some inflated benefits or something for a short period of time, but, you know, they're they're back on track and they're digging their way out of that hole right now, so. Yes.
So I kind of took the numbers that you have on these different things and start putting into this spreadsheet and see how we got into. But um, you know, I can see, you know, like some money going towards a recovery grants, I can see making up some of the money on the casinos, because that was. A really successful project and I can also see throwing another hundred thousand at it for the round two. The homeless response, I kind of feel like, hey, if I wanna know more about what it is we're talking about, I have, you know, obviously it's a huge issue, but I also. Don't want us to kind of get into the social service business, because I don't think that's our role, um and and this is just one-time money and then, you know. End up owning it, uh, because the county will be more than happy to have us on it. Um, the library bookmobile, I'm, you know, I go either way on that, I've got some concern that we are very much under, we underfunded our. The money we put towards expanding our actual collection, both, you know, hard copy and also the digital and audio stuff. So I, you know, I would be more interested in seeing us expand that, because we've increased demand for it. Um, the revenue replacement, I think, you know, some of that's fine, I like the idea, um, with the wastewater, they, the fog thing, I think that needs to be though. Kind of a carrot and stick kind of thing, where you give them an opportunity, you're gonna get some money towards doing it and then, you know, and if they don't, then we need to start. Implementing some, you know, fines or whatever, if they're causing problems to our sewer lines. But I'm gonna hold on back on that Sandy net expansion, because what I would like, I, first of all, I think, you know, I really feel strongly that, you know, those communities that. We listed were, you know, where we should be putting our money, but more than that, what I would like to propose is that we actually set aside. I don't know, you know, I don't know what it costs, but we put together that, you know, this city needs to do another Sandy net master plan. The one we had was done, I don't know, twelve, fifteen years ago or something.
Uh, a little less than that, but yeah.
Ten, ten or twelve years, anyway, it's expired, it's out of date, and and we don't have anything right now. To kind of guide us on how, how and where we should be, you know, going with Sandy, and and things kind of come up and. Like tonight, you know, that's gonna come up, but I really want to see us take some of this money and put it towards getting a master plan done. So that we can kind of figure out like this idea of, you know, what are, what we need to do as part of that is do it, uh, what did I say that, utility rate assessment? You know, to really determine what the cost for delivering services are, from, you know, planning, construction, operations, maintenance, customer service, troubleshooting. Technology that keeps out updating itself every five years, replacement, you know, appreciation, all those things. You know, consultants can put that together for us, and we need to have that, so that we have a good idea of what the actual cost is, what what we're charging compared to what. Charging, are we getting our money back, and especially in light of this proposal where, you know, to to basically. I mean, you know, supplying internet service to all the Placis County businesses that scares the beaver to, so I'm gonna talk to that later, but. Need a master plan for our Sandy net program, we need to figure out what, you know, what's our mission, what's our area that we wanna focus on first? I was shocked to find out that we don't have it in these key areas that are probably the medias in our community and. And I wanna see that we get it there and I wanna see that we get into our huge urban growth boundary, urban reserve boundary. Um, you know, those are priority ours for me, rather than, you know, heading out to Wilsonville, Kansas City, to provide internet service for Placis County, so. Those would be my priorities there, and when I, like I said, when I did the thing and kind of doubt, you know, reduce the amount, amounts on some of these things. We can do it with the one point two six, whatever, we could do, you know, a lot of these.
So any question?
Yeah.
Is there a reason that that four hundred or five thousand that we're talking about couldn't be a loan sent it up?
So we can loan to businesses, I'm not sure the parameters around the loan itself. Additional research on that.
Just.
Cause I mean, that's an investment, it's gonna generate extra, even though I would assume at some point it's gonna pay off, pay off for itself.
Yeah, I think.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, um, I'm not gonna talk about the whole Sandy net thing, because I wanna get through this, and we have an agenda here, um, except for the fact that, that on the. Uh, the, the plan, the master plan, we already identified that and have been, and already talking about it at the Sandy Net Board about doing the master plan. They're all geared up to do that, so that wasn't something we haven't thought about, we were already planning and reviewed, we were wanting to, which we completed everything on. Anyways, it's, it's, you know, my most successful thing I've been part of here. Um, as far as uh going through the program, I agree wholeheartedly with what you guys have said, I mean. Uh, with, you know, a couple of caveats of things, um, you know, the uh, gazebos, I think have been a great program, I mean. So I look at things that's infrastructure and what can infrastructure bring, um, I like to hear what you said about the social services aspects of things. And getting into that long-term, um, but, so infrastructure, we need gazebo type things to help our businesses all. In wastewater, we don't, I don't wanna touch that with a ten-foot pole, because I don't wanna jeopardize anything there. But I like what you said about the clean water aspect of things and going, hey, you know, we got some. Possible more grants coming down, I don't wanna jeopardize those, but, you know, we got master planning, we got all these other things that we're gonna need to do that we could help with. And that's an infrastructure type of thing, um, you know, Sandy net, um, you know. Or the reason why they aren't in the areas they are, I explained before, Rich, you weren't here at that part, but when we went to build out, we knocked on the doors, but. We aren't the owners of those complexes, and those owners wouldn't let you build anything on their property, so we had to move on, right? Um, and so now they're begging for it, but it goes back to a visual equity, we call it, you know, and those people that are probably the highest needs. Um, are the ones that live in those communities, so I think, I mean, I've heard from everyone, I don't need to harp on that, but just explaining a little bit about why. Wasn't we purpose, we tried hard to get in there, we didn't skip on anything, but couldn't get in.
I'm trying, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to understand exactly what we're talking about, though, so are we talking about individually, like owners of homes that have said no, or are we talking? Full communities, because that's where I started, thinking, okay, we're all communities that the developer decided not to.
Apartment com, you think of many are apartment complexes and trailer.
There's a map, but I think, okay.
And that, and that's what those are, and we, we were talking, and a lot of them were thinking, well, if they live outside the state, you know, they're down through managing the company and.
And then we heard, and I'm sorry, it's just I'm interested in this, because.
Yeah.
I hear a lot from the folks out on Colorado Road who are not in our jurisdiction about how they want Sandy net, but I have not heard a lot. From other, from communities within, I just haven't heard a lot from people saying, hey, I live in Sandy and I can't get Sandy net, so is it something that we have been hearing a lot? I, I don't know.
It's a small amount, um, in the fact that geographically, that's a small amount, meaning like all the houses and stuff. Uh, so that is something, of course, I hear it, because, you know, and.
Right.
I don't know, people, it may mean all kinds of things with the name Sandy net, but, but the point being there is, there are areas that have definitely asked, and so we're. Constantly trying, there are some other ones that came back and said, hey, come in now, we want you, because we realized, oh, crud. It also is um determined on rentals of houses and apartments, but people are trying to rent their place and they got competition between the next one down there. They want it to sell, when there is no competition, I mean, there, when there's more need out there, they don't wanna do anything for that. And that's just a business side of things, but, so anyways, just looking at, at some of those places, you can see that they're. A lot of them are, we would consider maybe lower income neighborhoods that are really in the.
It is actually sectioned, some of them are, so.
Right, yeah, and some of it elderly and other uh communities there, so anyways, that's the story behind it, I don't wanna. We were all on the same page, it seems like, keep the other chart on there, um, but um, the hook in the bill, um, you know. I think it's a cool idea, like our trolleys and things like that, getting out there, but I do think that maybe um where we are now. I don't know if that's the best place for that investment, the ongoing cost of that, the other ones kind of bring back money, the Sandy net brings back some money back into. I don't know about putting out a loan, we're already kind of, we even our loan, trying to pay it off to pay other things, but whatever makes sense, so that part of it. Would be there, and then going back to the homelessness, I think that we do have something out there, if there could be a master plan for that, I know that Rich and. Laurie have been working on that and putting something together that could really. Here that committee uh and steer maybe some resources in that, I don't think a hundred thousand dollars will fix the homelessness aspect, no one here thinks that. I think maybe having that with uh. Ideas, I don't know the possibilities of it, but do you think that that would be? Positive thing for our community. Picking up something. As far as the business recovery grants, I don't, I don't know where, so that I don't feel like we're in the same, though we were. Eighteen months ago, but I'm not the business that's sitting there, that might be struggling, and I do appreciate gazebos, because I think. And we're looking like we had a crystal ball looking into the future. Um, and not only that, the other thing about that one, though, I think it brings something to our community like our Sandy style. It brings back a community, you wanna go sit in regardless if COVID goes away, and all that's down the road, it brings something that's unique. And we, so in that aspect. The water treatment area, said that, but the grease traps, I think are a must, I think that regardless of that, it helps out our, our own. We're a treatment plant already and our pipes that go there, so, you know, and it's not a terrible amount of money when they're talking about. We already do a grant program for the renewal, for grease traps as well, uh, he and I. Programmed it, yeah, so anyways. I think we're saying a lot of the same things.
Uh, so thanks, yeah, and I, I agree. So thanks, yeah, and I, I agree. I, I think we are all saying a lot of the same things and, and Dawn, I, I agree with where you started, especially talking about, you know, let's prioritize it, what are our big priorities? Especially when we talk about the timeline, we have to spend the money. Uh, there are some different opportunities with revenue coming in. You talk about the national infrastructure package and stuff. I mean, I would certainly hate to spend a tremendous amount of money in infrastructure type projects that we will just a couple of months down the road, um, have some money to be able to allocate towards those projects.
Before you leave that.
Yeah.
The idea of have, when some of these packages come, sometimes shovel ready projects are the ones.
That's exactly right.
So we have shovel ready.
Oh, yeah.
Things that are, are already got an idea and a concept. And that's what I think. When I talk about freshwater, that's what I think.
Yeah.
Pushing for is to get something to a shovel ready.
Okay.
Base of proposals.
Yeah, no, I think that's right. Um, you know, on the business recovery grants, you know, and we talked a little bit about the center last council meeting. As I'd say, you know, in the early days of the pandemic, talking to business owners, hearing a lot of, we did, we need money, right? We just, we just need cash flow. Um, and what you hear more now is, is, you know, we have demand, but we don't have labor. Um, and, you know, so we talked about some sort of bonus structure program or being that I brought up. But, you know, something, uh, just as intriguing, if not more so, was something that Dawn brought up was, you know, maybe it's childcare assistance or stuff like that. And so I, I do, I do think that a, there is a need for a business, uh, recovery grant program. I mean, the whole program's called the American Recovery Act. Our business owners, you know, I'm not as optimistic, Dawn, as I think that's maybe what I heard. I, I understand that they, they lasted through this, but sometimes there's a difference between just hanging on and then being able to like thrive into the future, especially if you can't meet, you know, some of the labor demand. So I, I do think there's more. That said, I don't know, and maybe I could be convinced to stand, let's, you know, do some sort of a committee that gives these grants and the businesses, it's on them to make the case if they're gonna do it, it's some sort of bonus program or childcare. Maybe I can be brought to that, but I don't love the idea of just handing out money again. Um, you know, I, I wanna be able to see some accountability to it. Uh, so that's my thoughts on that. On the gazebo cover structure program, the one topic I'd like to see us kind of solidify around tonight on that is this, do we wanna fully reimburse our urban renewal fund, you know, for the money that's already been allocated out of it? Or just a portion of it, or how do we feel overall about that? Uh, I think that is something that I'll wanna return with the end. Homelessness response, I agree with the word said there, a hundred thousand's gonna be tough, is a major issue though. Um, Sandy Net expansion, uh, yeah, infrastructure, absolutely. Sandy, that's more and more important through the pandemic. Uh, library, bookmobile, like Tenderland where everybody else is up for this allocation of money. And then water, wastewater, yeah, shovel ready, especially on the water, uh, wastewater, I don't wanna touch. Uh, yeah, I'm hearing a lot of the same things, but I could return to it kind of real briefly is, is how are we feeling on the urban renewal fund? Um, I kind, you know, we utilized it to pay the, we mentioned earlier the Kathleen's question. We paid out some business recovery grants, used CARE Act to reverse your renewal fund. Learning that lesson, we took a bit of a gamble and a chance and paid for the covered structure program. Feeling like we were gonna have this, this money come available that we could reimburse ourselves. What do you guys think? Do you wanna make coal on the urban renewal fund? Do we feel good about that budget? Or maybe we wanna keep it separate? I'm open.
That's another agenda item tonight. And the thing, the question I think I sent, I sent it to you. Or somebody, I sent, sent to David, I guess. And I said something like, you know, the one great present staff report, but the one thing I'm not clear on is, you know, what's the overall urban renewal budget? And how does, you know, how does funding all this, you know, affect the whole budget? So to your question, I would say, you know, at least partially reimburse it, yeah. It's not, you know, I don't know about all of it, cause there's other things up here. But, you know, I mean, I, it's like four hundred and forty, what we're talking about?
Yeah, four hundred and forty.
Yeah, so I, you know, I'd like to get probably, you know, three eighty to four hundred or something going towards it, just to make it whole.
That's where I'm at.
Yeah.
So that's my point. Urban renewal is a bank account, right? And we get to use it for any of the faults of the urban renewal. Campus is a priority, so things that would not be funded under this act, right? That's that much less money. As long as priorities, we don't have something higher, right? For making a hole.
I'll be out on that, so. I'm sorry, I hear, Tyler, as you read through our urban renewal restrictions and kind of then reading through the restrictions on this, what would you believe would be a more of a restricted revenue source for us? Urban renewal fund or specifically related to the project of covered structures? Or just generally?
Just generally speaking.
Urban renewal is a provider, just yeah.
And towards infrastructure type programs and not, you know, not, not for ongoing expenses. I, and I, but the only reason I ask that is, is, is your, you know, do we wanna keep the money in the flexible account?
I, I, I like it more there, just because it takes up most of the business order and we've just got some big projects that we got lined up, but it's.
But I think we can also use some of this funding for the areas outside of the urban renewal.
I think that's.
Industrial.
And this is, I, I may come across as the anti-colonize structure person, I don't mean it that, but I think, but to the end now. We have maybe one more that's outside. It's not the next thing, there's not another phase two of ten covered structures that are going. So we need to know what the next thing is, right?
Right.
Yes, I'm in favor of reimbursing it. But one of the things we've talked about a bunch in the past years now is that we might put up a priority system for the urban renewal fund where that money's gonna go, how much that's gonna be spent in different projects. We have a number of really big projects that are coming down the road. What percentage will be part of this, part of that? I think we should be looking at some sort of plan in the whether it's four forty or three hundred or whatever. I like the, just reimbursing paramount into that account. Certainly brings that flexibility back up. I, I think that the renewal dollar seems pretty flexible, though, inside the, so.
That was my, thank you for bringing it up, cause I, Donna, me, um, the same thing as what you guys just chatting about, which is the easier flexibility because there's restrictions on this. Even the idea of, all right, well, there's some industrial areas that look commercial that can't be used with urban renewal. But then they wouldn't be covered necessarily with the, the, these particular funds and being able to use it. Or is there something else that would be restrictive here that we can prioritize and say, hey, we're gonna use that for that? In my mind, I, it didn't, I guess, the gazebo's, the cover destruction, uh, cover structure program. Now, I guess when we went and spent that money, I was already had written it off, not thinking we're gonna get it now through a grant, right? Cause I think that's the best. We might have talked about that.
We talked about the.
Right, but I guess in my mind, I don't count that until it's in the bank account. So in, in voting and all that is, is all right, that's, we, we weren't gonna get that back because otherwise, you know, it's, I'm, you know, surprised it's back, but otherwise it's written off, right? That's my mind.
I think it was a big part of the discussion in my mind and probably stuff.
Okay.
I think individually, we each.
That's how I individually thought about it, you know, that this was, okay, I'm not gonna, uh, so in that, uh, this allocation, I was thinking would be on top of that, towards that. So I guess that's how my mind was working. Yes, we did talk about it, but there is no guarantee
Sure.
that we were gonna get that back. So I had to be okay with letting that, uh, voting for that program without having a guarantee that, you know, I did it. Some other program in the future could pay for this back in the system.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is, is we're interested in, and I'm just going broad strokes here. This next recovery grants of some iteration, right, more, yeah, gazebo's. That's right, with accountability. Um, gazebo cover structure program. To, we, we have vast interest in a large reimbursement towards urban renewal fund. We'd like to see what that looks like. We also need to have this other discussion later tonight. Uh, some more planning on that, but we're moving strongly in that direction.
But also covering the areas outside the urban renewal.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Second thought.
Yeah. Home, homeless response, I'm not hearing a lot of interest as far as allocating this money at this time, maybe later on.
Yeah, but the task force comes back with some ideas.
I think they all recognize it's a big issue.
It's a big question.
I'm feeling, I'm, from what I'm hearing, I'm feeling the group feeling we should do Sandy Net expansion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think it's, I think it just.
How about setting that master?
Well, I think we're looking at moving ahead with.
Yeah, we were already.
How is that being paid for? There's nothing in there for the budget.
There, well, we have to identify what we want for that, but then, I, well, I don't know if it's online or not, but we talked about in the budgeting process, about a dash of that.
Yeah. Uh, library, uh, bookmobile, I'm not hearing a lot on that. Revenue replacement, I'm not hearing a lot. And then on water wastewater, I'm hearing, let's talk about allocating some money for us getting more shovel ready, um, in preparation. For the fresh water.
And then the fall.
And the fall, and the fall, yeah.
I love that people put on their eye and eyes, anything that gets a shovel ready. We're gonna have more budgets.
Jordan, how you feeling about that? Yeah, this is, this is very directed. Um, and remember, we have four years to spend the money. Um, but we also have another function about, so what I, what I think we'll do is bring back, uh, more this outline. Um, one thing I wanna mention, just one of the, uh, revenue loss, uh, with the general funds. Um, I, there is some sort of way to do with that. Basically, so recognizing that we have to do a budget process that is losing revenue. We're gonna replenish that revenue loss. We now free up more general revenue that we had allocated in the budget process, that then can go to other purposes. So not saying you need to decide and talk about that tonight, but that's something to think about going forward. If that's a lower priority. Couple, couple hundred thousand. Yeah, and I think eighty of that was in the police department, uh, citations and stuff. So it, it does give you some flexibility within the general line to kind of move somebody around. So.
I would like to add to the mayor's summary that as far as the economic or the business recovery options. I would encourage our economic guy to get out, talk to some business owners about some of the ideas that we talked about, just to get a feel for what they're hurting, what would be beneficial. And I would include the thing, talk about the previous council meeting of automation, childcare credits, and fill in their blank, let's see what their opinion.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to say, this is like, we have, it's four years, right?
Yeah.
So I, I kind of feel like, I understand making priorities and having a game plan. But I kind of feel like we're putting a part of the point of this here and trying to prioritize something without a real objective in sight. And so, um, I'm actually for, um, I would actually be for, uh, replacing the revenue because I think that's something that's planned. And like you said, it frees up funds that can be used other places in the general fund. And I think that's, that, that is freedom in itself. And we're just simply replacing, well, the same thing with the, um, permanent renewal funds, right? It's replacing those, it's getting us back to square one, which is what these, what these funds are designed to do. But then after that, I mean, we can have priorities in that. And I, I do think infrastructure investment is super important. But some of this other stuff, I kind of feel like we need to hear, um, especially when it comes to the grants and stuff like that, we need to hear, what are the needs? Instead of us trying to decide it in this room, hear what it is from out there.
Yeah, we don't have to execute on all this stuff at the same time, right? I, I imagine we're coming back with the flush out grant program. And I, I think one of the reasons we wanna get this in front of you now that we have one point two billion in hand is, you know, like the mayor said, this is the Recovery Act for recovery, and here we are, you know, trying to come out of a pandemic. You know, the purpose is to truly, you know, get this back into the economy and to get things moving. So, you know, sort of felt like we were obligated to kind of have this conversation and then just kind of roll forward and see where we go with it. Uh, and so just sitting on the money until the next biennial or.
We've talked about inflation, don't lose track of it. These bigger projects will be subject to huge pricing issues, so time will lower that purchasing power.
All right, with that, we're gonna look to adjourn. Uh, Jeff, you got role on that. Uh, all councillors present except for councillor Smallwood, excuse that.
Yes.
And call the Sandy City Urban Renewal Board meeting to order. Uh, Jeff, will you please call the role?
As board member Pete told.
Here.
Board member Smallwood is absent, excuse.
Excuse, yeah.
Okay, board member Sheldon.
Here.
And board member Walker.
Here.
Board member Exner.
Here.
Board member Hookinson.
Here.
Board member Snyder.
Here.
Uh, board member Jones.
Here.
And board chair Pulliam.
Here. Um, all right, welcome to our urban renewal board meeting. Um, we have on the agenda tonight, uh, our, um, well, let's start with our approval of our meeting minutes from our July nineteenth uh, meeting. Do I have any motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes?
I'll second it.
Of a motion by board member Pete told, a second by member, uh, Walker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye or providing me a thumbs up. Aye. Oppose nay or a thumbs down? Motion carries on to new business, the authorization of round two of the permanent cover structure program. Um, Dave Snyder, you wanna kick us off?
Yes, sir. Good evening, sir, board. Um, uh, we're gonna give you a really quick brief update on the program tonight. And, uh, where we are right now, and then there are two questions before the board. Uh, shall the, the Sandy Urban Renewal Agency offer a second round of this program? And number two, if so, what changes, if any, should be made of the program? Uh, Jeff, I believe has a, uh, PowerPoint here. Uh, first of all, I'm just gonna go through real quick and show you, um, where we are with the program of the seven projects that we approved in January, or, or in March, rather. We are, uh, completely finished with four. We're functionally finished with the fifth, we're just waiting on one small thing to get done. Uh, we have the si- sixth scheduled to start shortly, and the seventh is a unique project that I will be starting on tomorrow. Um, and that's the one over at the toll gate. So just to give you an idea, for those of you who haven't, um, had a chance to see all of them yet, um, I just wanted to give you a brief, uh, showing of what the five that are completed or functionally completed look like. So reas, guys have already seen. So moving on, uh, this is the one over at La Happy. I know, uh, several of you, uh, have, uh, had an opportunity to sit under that one too. Um, the city did not put any funds into the disco ball, just so you know. Um, next slide.
We see, how?
You're not seeing.
We don't get this.
They're not on.
You're not seeing slides? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I have one on one screen. But yes, not on this one for some reason.
I apologize. So, uh, I should have said this before, um, big thanks to our IT staff. We even actually now have the ability to toggle between the two views.
Well, there's a button.
There's a button.
Okay.
My apologies, I should have said it.
Touchscreen or?
Oh, there's an actual button on the bottom there.
Okay.
I'm happy sharing.
Technology, we got it.
I got it.
So this allows you to choose to see either the slides that are being presented or the people who are in the Zoom.
Very good, thank you. Sorry to interrupt you, stop casting your data.
No, no worries. Okay, next slide. Uh, this is the one at Red Shed. Uh, this was just completed last month and, uh, I believe, well, he would be using it already, except, uh, that he is closed right now doing some work on the interior of the business. Uh, we're hoping that that will, um, be done later this week and, uh, we'll be, uh, available to sit out there. So, next slide. Here's one of Boring Brewing, just finished up a couple of weeks ago. Um, and, uh, again, there is a little bit of additional work that's gonna be happening on a, a separate facade project. So, um, in addition to all of this, the building's actually gonna be painted and some of the siding's gonna be replaced too. I believe he's also replacing the man door there in the south, which is in pretty bad shape. So this building's really gonna look nice when they're done, uh, when that part of it's done. Next slide. And then Sanlandia, uh, we just have one small, um, change that we're making to this design to, uh, correct a, uh, design issue that had come up there. Um, and so this should be done, uh, by the end of this week.
So that's the issue. I just, I've seen it up there for weeks now without any tables and chairs, or just some sort of issue with.
Yeah, yeah, there's an issue with the, um, with the drain that goes around it. Um, it, they ran into a problem in the back corner there and so, uh, fortunately, our building official, um, we were looking at having to remove part of it and replace it, which would have been really expensive. Uh, but fortunately, our building official came up with a really good, um, solution to the problem and a very inexpensive one too. So hat tip to Terry on that one.
Okay, cool.
And then, uh, No Place, uh, is scheduled to start, I believe, next week and, um,
And then, No Place is scheduled to start, I believe, next week, and hopefully, we'll get started on the toll, toll gate shortly after that, we'll be done. So, financial situation, for reference, the original cost estimate for this program back in March was a range of five hundred and ninety-one to seven hundred and twenty-six thousand. This was reduced to a range of four hundred and thirty-six to six oh one, when the program was cut back to the current seven active projects that we have. We are currently at a total of four hundred and fifty-one thousand spent. This includes all the costs for the first five completed projects, so all the, all the images you just saw there, plus the base price from the No Place Saloon Project. So my final estimate for this, if we assume a contingency, a small contingency, say five thousand for change orders at No Place, and we assume a total project cost of between forty and seven, forty and seventy thousand for the toll gate, the toll gate will be a little cheaper because it's not gonna have a, it's gonna have a flat roof. And we did get one bid in already on that one from a company called Patio Cover People, the bid was about four, forty-four thousand dollars. The owner, the applicant didn't want to go with it, he had some pretty valid reasons for not wanting to go with that, we had a little bit of issue with the contractor. So, we've, I've got two or three more contractors lined up, I'm gonna be calling tomorrow morning to see about that. I assume that project's gonna cost probably in the neighborhood of fifty thousand dollars, when all is said and done. So that'll give us a final range of four ninety-six to five twenty-six. So that's where we're at right now.
Hey David, are you there?
Yes, sir.
All right, question for you from Don.
Hey, how did the flat roof on Tollgate, I thought the, the covered structures were to adopt Sandy style, and I know Tollgate's got an exception, but I thought the covered structures had to comply with Sandy style.
Not in this case, and it's because of that exception, and also because.
The direction from this grant program was that would comply with Sandy style.
Well, it does substantially comply with Sandy style, it just doesn't have a pitched roof, because a pitched roof in that particular area, in the place that he wants to put it, would be very, very difficult and expensive.
Well, and all I can speak to is how I, how I took the conversation was, is that it would comply with Sandy style within the rules of Sandy style, so, I mean, there's only a couple exceptions to it.
Joe's, and Tollgate.
Joe, Joe's donuts, which I.
No, there is more than that.
But there's also more than one Sandy style as well, there's just a little bit of.
The white buildings. Tollgate, there's a number of things that are happening, so, as I understood it, I'm talking to the Tollgate folks, is that it's gonna be complimentary to the Sandy style, except for the flat roof.
Correct.
Tollgate.
That is correct, we actually asked for some modifications to the original design to include Sandy style elements, specifically heavy timbers on the supports. He was gonna use aluminum, aluminum supports, and we asked if we could add that because of Sandy style, and he said, sure, no problem. I don't think that'll be a problem with any other of the contractors that we talked to about that. And it'll still comply with Sandy style as far as color, and, well, those two elements, particularly the heavy timbers and the color, maybe some metal bracketing as well. So there will be Sandy style elements to it, it's just not gonna have a pitched roof. So, so I guess the question then becomes, you know, shall the Urban Renewal Agency offer a second round of this program? If you decide tonight to go ahead and do that, there are a couple of changes to the program that the Economic Development Department would like to suggest to the board. I feel that these changes would make my estimates a lot more accurate, and more importantly, it'll significantly reduce change orders in the future, which I know is something that a couple of members of the board have expressed some concern about in the past. The first change that I'd like to suggest is to include in the program the element that we included last time around, saying that if a project exceeds project estimates by a certain amount, ten percent, say, on the contract price, we'll bring it back before the board for approval before proceeding. Because we'd like to be perfectly transparent in all of this, but truth be told, I think I'm getting a little better about estimating these projects now that I've been through a first round. And I think I have a better handle on what will be needed here, at least not only from a design element, but from a planning and building element as well. So unless there's a disaster with future projects, I, I really doubt that this is gonna be necessary. But I think that that for, for transparency issues, I think that's, that's important, and I'd like to suggest that as the first change. The second change is maybe to remove the tables and chairs as an approved expense in this program. The idea behind that was good, we obviously didn't want any of our applicants to be, you know, purchasing the cheap plastic white Costco chairs to put out there underneath these, these great structures. What we found is only two of the, of the first five, and I don't think the other two will, will be interested either, have expressed any interest at all in doing this. And the rest of the applicants have not only purchased their own tables and chairs, but they've actually purchased really nice ones, I think they see the value in this as well. So I, I just don't think that that element is necessary for the product, for the program to be successful going forward. And that's, that I will leave there as far as changes to the program, and we're certain, Steph is certainly open to suggestion from the board as to any other changes you'd like to make as well.
All right, thanks, David. And I guess first question I have for you is, is that we have been talking to different business owners in the community. How, how many do you perceive participating in the second round of applications?
I think I estimated that we will probably see between three and five applications here, there is a potential we could see more, but I doubt it. And if I were to have to, if I was a bet man, I'd probably say closer to three than five. I know of three applicants that will apply for the program right now, I don't know anybody else who's, who's champion at the bit for it, so to speak. Although I could see maybe, well, there's two other ones that I could see that could potentially apply depending on other variables.
Out of curiosity, how many fall outside of the urban renewal district?
One. And they will absolutely apply for one of these.
Yeah, okay. Other questions, comments?
Is there size limits on the size of the gazebo?
You know, we didn't put any size limits in there originally, and the size, we, we kind of went off of a, off of a template of between twenty and twenty-five feet on each side. The smallest one is twenty by twenty, largest one, I think, there was a change we had to do to get around a physical impediment. So I think there was one that's, the one at La Happy is twenty-four by twenty-seven. But I, if you were considering a maximum, I think twenty-five by twenty-five is plenty big, in my personal.
All right, well, the one thing I'd say about the cover structure program in general is that, for me, this just hits on all cylinders. As I talk to the business owners who have got these up, they've all talked about an increase in sales as a result of, one, just an increase of capacity, but the other summer months, and people enjoy sitting outside. I think it's also given a little bit of ease with the Delta variant, not knowing what kinds of restrictions can come down, knowing that we have this available. Our neighbors really enjoy it, the people Sandy, if I hear compliments all the time from people really enjoying these outdoor structures. And then I think it also is marketable, it helps our community, so Jeremy's comments earlier is kind of one of those outside things that we become known for, being a little outside in the box. And we get travelers heading, you know, the Mount Hood Recreational Area in central Oregon, the summer months, a lot in the winter months, and just gives us a little extra kind of enticement for people to stop and shop and buy locally. And so I, I think the ones that have popped up have been great, it's exactly what we want to use the ARPA funds for, I know this is urban renewal, but we had the earlier conversation about, you know, reimbursing some of the program, if not all of it. I'm, I'm an advocate, I'd like to go back out to the community under what David has put out here, you know, maybe we put to the side the tables and chairs, that sounds fine to me. But I'd like to go out to the community and take another look at this thing, that's me, so.
I have, yeah, a couple, couple thoughts. Going back to the Sanlandia. One of the concerns I raised already on when we did this was about the lighting and the color choices, and I was assured that we would, it would comply with style and it would look good. We ended up with kind of a CIA interview light in Sanlandia, it's got one single light hanging down on the bottom, glaringly white. And it, it's like, it's could have been spectacular, instead, it's kind of a miss, so, and I think it's a easy fix, something three or four or five hundred dollars. That, of all the sheds that we put up, that's the one that people come into town from Gresham, right, that they're going to see. And so we need to make sure that is lit and just looks sharp, and so, you know, if that's something we can follow up on to correct the lighting underneath it, and then to put some lights on the outside so that it hits and pops as you're coming into town, it'll make all the difference in the world for marketing, so that's one I'd like to see done. You know, I really haven't, see, it's one of the few I have not been into. What do you mean by just down? I mean, if you bought a fifty dollar lamp on sale for twenty bucks at Evil Bargain, and it had a cone and a light bulb on the bottom, that's what they put in the bottom of that shed. And there's no lights around the outside, so it's actually dark, so what you see is the glaring light of the trailers behind it, you don't see the trail, the covered area itself. And, and Landy is the, the, one of the non-Sandy style elements that, you know, popped up and really started to redefine kind of our look and feel. And so by putting that, that covered gazebo up now, we're starting to bring the style elements back in. I would also encourage us to, to look at what we could do with the longer part of that. You know, so let's, why limit it to one gazebo per business in this particular case, maybe, maybe something else could be built up through the center to tie that in even better. And, and keep that downtown quarter more of a, the signature Sandy style as opposed to food carts. I mean, I want to do food carts with style, that's, that's really what we're after, right?
The old, yeah, I mean, Don, the only response I have to that is, is I am a yes for anything we can do to improve that part of it.
Yeah, so, and this, this would be a good use of that money, I think.
Go ahead, and then we'll go to Kathleen.
Oh, okay, now I guess I'm pretty much in favor of this as well, I haven't seen the one in Sanlandia, but if it is just like you described, Don, it's, it's not.
I had to drive around and double check, because I was like, oh, no.
I'll draw, make sure, make a point to do that this week sometime, yeah, we want to make sure that these are quality, that was one of the original intents to it, so. In terms of, you know, as an increase, I think it's a really good idea to do it within the entire city, and so those that are outside of the downtown part, I guess I'm encouraging, I think I know which one it is. And I know that would be a great addition to our city, so. I'm in favor.
I, I think they're great, I loved, you know, what's nice about it is when you're sitting on the highway, having been here for thirty-some years, and we used to sit outside at these restaurants, the highway noise was just daunting to try to carry on conversation, enjoy yourself. When they have live music or even just, you know, canned music in these things, it really buffers the sound of the highway, so you can really enjoy your meal and converse with your folks with you. The one thing, I, so I'm really supportive of this whole program, and I like the idea of doing another round of this. What, the one thing that's just a little bit kind of stuck in my craw, though, is the fact that the last time we kind of got to approve, you know, which projects were going forth, and I kind of get the feeling like what we're being asked to do now is to say, yep, just approve, you know, a bunch of unknown projects, no, so we would still have to come back?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right, I want to have equity, I want to have, you know, I don't want one guy coming in with, you know, a hundred, you know, with three times the cost of the other ones and that kind of thing, so I'm thrilled with it and looking forward to seeing, seeing some more. I do think we do need to get that drainage issue figured out in the planning stage, you know. I saw the Sanlandia ones has the gutters just kind of pointing right out at people's feet, so when they walk by, it's gonna, they're gonna get wet if it's raining.
The drain so that the water would flow uphill.
Yeah, and that's what we're correcting right now.
It's, yeah, it's just, we're, we're getting better at it, so I'm, I'm really appreciative of all the improvements we're making and taking note of.
Sorry, Derek.
Problems.
No worries.
I thought you were doing.
No.
All right, are we good, or do we want, need a motion to go out to another round?
Before we close, I just want to point out, for outside of the urban renewal district, I would expect that staff would bring back to city council a similar proposal for handling anything outside so that we don't actually inadvertently approve that through this council, this board, correct?
Correct, absolutely, absolutely, when, when that one, when we bring that one application before you, assuming that they apply, we will make very clear that this business, that the business in question is outside the urban renewal district, so a different funding stream will be needed.
There is no program for outside the urban renewal district today. Staff needs to bring a proposal for such a program. The council, there is no application unless there's a program, correct? Yeah, and we can bring that with the proposal for the ARPA funds. That'd be fine.
Great. Phil, did you have something?
Yeah, I just had a question, you talked about replacement funds, what, what's that all about, are we, is there an option to get some of that replaced back in the urban renewal?
Yeah, the ARPA funds, the America Recoveries Act funds that we got, similar to how we did the business relief funds out of urban renewal, then the CARE Act dollars came and we reimbursed. The ARPA funds allow us to also reimburse that urban renewal fund, and so what we're talking about doing is, is using some of our ARPA allocated funds to reimburse the urban renewal fund for what we use for covered structures.
Awesome, at least a portion of it, yeah.
Support, so we're talking maybe up to the whole thing, but at least a portion, we're just, we're still going back and forth on that.
Okay, thanks.
We might also want to consider doing one of these things in the Plaza, Sandy Plaza. Just.
Said we have one.
Well, but it's not something that you can kind of set tables under and, and all that, it's kind of more like the bus stop shelter.
Yeah, I mean, you think like, there's a top side section to what, yeah.
Yeah, just, you know, because I mean, during the festivals and stuff we have there, we end up bringing out those umbrella, you know, tables and all that, so just something to consider.
Maybe the farmer's market now.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, I move to authorize the second round of the permanent outdoor covered structure program and to amend the program guidelines as proposed in the step before.
I'll second that.
I have a motion for board, I remember Walker, and a second for member Pete told. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Aye. Oppose and nay or a thumbs down. Motion carries, with that, I will adjourn our urban renewal board meeting, thank you to Chief Snyder and Chris. All right, with that, I will go ahead and call our Sandy City Council meeting to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Jeff, will you please call the role?
As councillor Pete told.
Here.
Councillor Smallwood is asking excuse, councillor Sheldon, here.
Councillor Walker, here.
Councillor Exner, here. Councillor Hookinson, here. Mayor Pulliam.
Here, Jeff, just so I know for public comment, did we have any signups for this evening for a public meeting?
No, mayor, we did not.
Okay, with that, is there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda?
One change to the agenda, regarding the Sandy Net project. So, one of the challenges that we have with this is that this IGA, I feel doesn't give us enough information as to what we're getting into. We don't have a master plan as to how we're gonna be proceeding with, with Sandy Net, we, there's a real concern, it's that, you know, if we were just doing this on five or six different areas, you know, five or six different businesses in a certain area, I could support it, but when we're talking about a huge, when we're talking about basically signing on to provide internet services, and that includes all the easements, and, you know, there's, there's just a whole lot of responsibilities that are listed in that IGA that just scared the heck out of me as to what we're signing on for. And, and we don't have any data to show us what it's gonna cost, anyway, I just feel like there's some more information that we need to proceed with this. I'd like to have a work session to talk more about it, it's, I love Sandy Net, I support Sandy Net, I want to expand Sandy Net, so don't take this as any negative. But I just want to make sure that we all understand what our priorities are, and that before we start becoming, you know, before we sign up to become Plaquemines County's internet provider, that we've understood what that means for our town, our service here in Sandy, what the actual costs are of doing that. I just think it's a little premature, this, you know, this IGA, I just have a whole lot of questions, and, and I think I need a whole lot more information. Financials, that, that, that utility rate assessment, things like that, before I can really sign on for. Sign on for, you know, providing services all over.
I'm just looking for a clarifying point. Sorry to interrupt, mayor. Are, are you looking to strike eleven dot four from the agenda? Is that your?
Yes.
Your move?
Yes.
I. But. I guess I would counter that and I would like not to strike it from the agenda. I think, uh, we put together a board and the board has talked about it. As it's put out there, uh, I reviewed it just like you reviewed it. Uh, things do make sense. For the layout of it and, and thank you, David, for reviewing it many times, um, in that. And so I love, you know. To have the opportunity to, to answer some of those questions. I don't know, uh, what the going. The, this I see is bringing in, I don't, I mean, if we're going to talk. So I would, I guess I would like to be on the agenda to talk.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt because I, I essentially, you know, what we're at risk of doing here is the council and you were about to go to it, I think. It's, is, is having the discussion on the agenda item before we're even there, right? And so what the real question I think for all of us is, is, is like, is, is there a reason not to just proceed to have the discussion? Later on in our agenda, we can of course decide at that time not to move forward. We can decide to table it, you know.
I move and keep it on the agenda.
Uh, well, I, I, I guess we have a motion on the floor to remove it. Is there a second to that motion? So I, I would, I would, I would say that we proceed and then we will debate the merits of the item at the time which it's on the agenda. So, okay. Okay, so with that, let's go ahead and proceed, um, to the consent, um, I'm sorry, uh, public comment. Uh, we are to the public comment portion of tonight's, uh, agenda. The council welcomes your comments at this time. Uh, wait, but nobody had signed up. Uh, so to our new process, no one signed up either online or showed up, uh, this evening for public comment. So we'll move forward to the consent, uh, agenda portion of our meeting. With that, we have our city council meeting minutes from our August sixteenth meeting. Unless there's discussion, there's very motion to adopt our consent agenda.
I'll move to adopt the consent agenda.
There's a second. There's a motion by Council Exter, a second by, uh, Council Hokinson to adopt our consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose, nay. Motion carries. We'll advance the new business request for assignment of Hoodview disposal franchise. Jordan?
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, tonight before you is a request of, uh, assignment of the Hoodview disposal franchise. Um, and I wanted to start by saying we do have a plan to bring this back to the city council on September twentieth for final consideration. And approval consent. Um, but tonight we wanted to at least present, uh, this request to the council. Um, answer and, and assemble any questions you might have. Um, I want to, uh, introduce Ray K. Who's here tonight. Um, and also Jason Hudson from Waste Connections, uh, who is in attendance tonight. So. There, I know they're logged into Zoom. If they haven't, if there's any questions that you have for either Hoodview, um, or Waste Connections, I know they would be happy to. Address those questions. Um, as I previewed at the last meeting, uh, we received this request, uh, last month, um, that. Khu, uh, company's holding is purchasing all the stock in Hoodview disposal and Khu Company's holdings is now owned by Waste Connections. Um, a little, little bit about our franchise agreement here at the city of Sandy, it's very robust. Um, if you've read through it. Um, uh, I think it's a very detailed and comprehensive franchise agreement. So. Um, I applaud the, the previous city council and the current city councillors who sat on the council at the time to, to draft that. Um, but as part of that franchise agreement, the council does have the right, uh, to consent to these assignments when they do come up. Um, and it's part of that process, uh, Waste Connections and Hoodview are required to submit, um, some information. Uh, for the council and for staff to digest, um, mainly to make sure that this assignment, um, would be able to be executed by the new company. Um, and I, I can say that Waste Connections as the third largest, uh, uh, waste hauler in the United States and, and, and North America. With Canada, uh, are equipped, uh, to provide these services. Um, and I think, uh. Mr. Hudson would probably vouch for that, that they would be able to provide these services that are outlined in our franchise agreement. That being said, this is still an opportunity for the council to, uh, engage in the dialogue, um, as we give consent, uh, for this transfer. About, uh, the services from our waste hauler, um, and complying with the franchise agreement. And entertain any negotiations or conversations at this time. If there's anything that maybe you want to consider. Um, and, and negotiate if they're open to, uh, these conversations about any of the terms that, uh. That are in the franchise that maybe you've heard from constituents over the last, uh, few years. I, I know there's, um, some questions about the spring cleanup day, for example. Um, which is in the franchise. Uh, and so maybe that's more of a, an operational conversation about. Returning to more of a community event rather than the voucher program. Um, there was a question, uh, a couple of weeks ago about the term that was a provision that was added, uh, this. Um, re- automatic renewal of the ten year term, uh, that we have with Hoodview. Um, and, yeah, it's an interesting provision. Um, I understand sort of the reasoning behind that in terms of a, a mama pop business that needs, you know. Um, can, you know, some assurances, it's a due depreciation for equipment. Um, obviously, it's, it's better for their finances and smoothing rates and things like that. Uh, but essentially how it goes is if the city gave notice of termination, um. They would trigger for the following year. So there would be a, a, a final ten year term. Now, if they're not performing, uh. To the franchise's obligations, not performing their services and, and not satisfying our needs, then that's a different conversation. But. Um, so that, that term I know is, uh, something that was added a, a few years ago, um, at the request and the council. Um, granted that and, and add that to the franchise at that time. So, uh, the, the, the main, like I said, the main purpose of tonight is really, um, to introduce this, uh, consent. Um, uh, assignment to, to the council. Uh, if there's any questions about the existing franchise, uh, David or I can help answer those. If there's questions about Waste Connections, uh, there are an established waste hauler here. In state of Oregon, state of Washington, I believe they have two existing franchises or two territories, um, that they serve in Clackamas County. Um, and so they're familiar with somewhat of the, the county and the territory. Uh, it's my understanding, um, from Hoodview that, uh, their employees, their drivers. Um, and some of their operational, other operational staff will be moving forward, um, into the, into Waste Connections. So they'll continue to drive the routes and, and serve the, the city of Sandy. Um, I, I would want to kind of give the opportunity now for either Ray or, or Jason, if you want to, um, say a few words or, um. Talk about this, uh, uh, this, uh, well, the sale and, uh, sort of your plans.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Ray K. Hoot. Um, I'm this, I'm the second generation here at our company and. Um, we've been doing this for, my family's been doing this for over fifty years. And, um, it is just, is, is just, um, the time has come for us, um, to. To, uh, move on, um. With our, um, business and it's not something that we took lightly. Um, we have enjoyed serving. The city of Sandy and, and all the neighboring cities that we serve. And, um, we really. Did a heartfelt search for the right successor here. There's really only a few options, um, but we have a, we have a pretty, um, a pretty. Good core values here and, and Waste Connections kind of knocks that out of the park. We think that they're going to be a, a fabulous hauler for you guys. As we've watched them acquire other companies over the past few years. They, they treat their customers good, they treat their employees good. Um, that was really the, the two most important things for us. Um, in our consideration. And, um. My understanding is that they're going to keep, keep everybody on board that, um, wishes to stay on board at this time. That's pretty much everybody except for, except for the, the shareholders, the current shareholders in our company. And so the trucks are going to stay the same color. They're going to keep the same name. They're going to keep the same, um, managers that we already have. Operations managers, we already have the general manager, we already have. Um, all those guys are staying, uh, on with Waste Connections. And so there really won't be any. As far as the customer sees, there really won't be any difference, um, going forward that. That anybody will notice. And I'm, sorry, I'm not a good speaker, but I'm happy to take any questions anybody has.
Thank you, Ray.
Thanks, mayor and council. Uh, my name is Jason Hudson. I'm, uh, uh, work for Waste Connections. My family had a garbage company in. Saint Helens, Oregon, um, and we sold the Waste Connections in two thousand. So I've worked with them for the past twenty one years. Uh, they actually started in Vancouver in nineteen ninety seven was the, was their birthplace. Um, just a couple of things about Waste Connections, you know, we really, um. Believe that it's a local business, you know, what, what you guys want in Sandy, Oregon isn't necessarily what, you know, works in Portland or Yakima. Uh, Washington. So, you know, we, we look forward to partnering with this, with the city of Sandy and. And providing, like, like Ray said, hopefully, you know, our goal is the customer doesn't really notice any change. Uh, we're going to retain the same offices, you know, customer service still going to be provided locally. Um, garbage picked up by the same drivers. Um, and we just look forward to partnering with you guys and, um, supporting the city of Sandy.
Thank you. Um, any questions from council?
I have a few questions.
Yeah.
I don't know if you can, I'm Jeremy, by the way, can't really see that from the, uh, screen there, my name on the board, but anyway. Um, a few things that we had in the past and want to know about making sure they, they come back, uh, or have discussions about those things amongst the council and. Um, and just a few things I had, uh, the spring cleanup was one way I've heard from residents, um, as well. Uh, they liked the one day that we all knew that was coming up, uh, and that two years ago related around COVID was dropped at that point in time. Um, I guess something more along the lines of, um. We used to actually have styrofoam. I don't know, Ray, if you're the one that was coming out here. Uh, I bring this up every time. There was another gentleman here and he remembers it. But we used to be able to recycle styrofoam and there are places that actually recycle styrofoam still. Um, and, and so, um, I know that comes down to who buys it and that type of thing. But if we're going to go through the process of this. Uh, want to ask the question and be able to bring that back is that is a, uh, that was something that, um. You know, a lot of people enjoy it, especially now more than ever with Amazon dropping everything off. Um, the other question I had, what cities, uh, you said there are two cities in Clackamas County that already have Waste Connections? What cities are those? And then the follow-up question to that would be, um, what other cities, uh, have, um. Our current service that would be going over to Waste Connections as well. Does that make sense? How many? Already have Waste Connections in Clackamas County and when the sale is complete, what other cities would be joining Waste Connections?
I think it's unincorporated Clackamas County has, um, agreements with Waste Connections through Arrow Sanitary. And Jason, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that. So a couple of areas, um, I think more on the western part of the county. And then all of the, uh, Khu family's holdings, which Ray can help answer, I believe includes. Include like Cambie and Westland, um, and your businesses and those other areas.
Yeah, so the, um, other areas would be the city Cambie, the city of Westland. And, um, a, a portion of the city of Portland, uh, a portion of the city Milwaukee. And then, uh, area that's unincorporated Clackamas County that's kind of surrounds the Sandy area, um, to the, surrounds the area to the west. Like Boring Damascus area and, and also a portion of Happy Valley.
And would, uh, would it be under Waste Connections keeping the same name or would they change to a Waste Connections? Uh, logo vehicles and that type of thing because it sounds like right now we have a lot of different ones, you know. Um, in that, would it be large, like, what we had with Waste Management before?
Yeah, our, our, if, if I may, our, our plan would be to continue to run this, uh, Hoodview disposal. Um, you know, that's one thing we do differently than Waste Connections. We're in, you know, for example, the DOWS, Hood River, we operate as the DOWS disposal. We operate as Hood River Garbage Service. Um, we're in Estacada, you know, in Portland and Estacada, we operate and Clackamas County will operate as Arrow Sanitary Service. Um, but, but we plan to, again, just run this, you know, continue to run as the family business of, of Hoodview.
Okay. And so there wouldn't be any change out of. Containers, I guess, that would need to be done like we've done in the past.
No.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then I guess the only other question concern I had from years ago was that ten year contract that. Um, not being able to start, if you wanted to get out of a contract, giving ten years notice on that. Um, which I brought up and voted against when we did it the original time, so.
Well, spring, spring cleaning.
Yeah, spring cleaning, I, I, I said that at the beginning. So, yeah, that one I made sure was the first thing on my list.
Question, uh, for David, what happens if we don't approve this?
Getting to my unmute button, excuse me. Um, what happens if you don't approve it? Well, it, it, um. Would presumably continue as, as, um, uh, Hoodview, uh, as it's owned now. Um, I, I, I think that that's a, a bit of an open question, obviously, as I understand it, the holding company has already been acquired. Uh, so it, it may very well be, uh, um. A, a matter of, of sort of corporate, uh, structure and ownership that would change, but, um, it would ultimately be still owned theoretically by. Um, Hoodview, uh, disposal and recycling. Um, it, you know, it's, it's an interesting question because the, the franchises, it's written, um, in this case. Uh, as I understand the proposed transaction, um, i- it's not that, um, Hoodview is acquiring, uh. You know, uh, uh, other, other, uh, companies, it's, it's actually going to be, uh, acquired by a larger company. And the way it's written, as you all know, is that that would then be, um, a matter of you waiving, uh, your rights, um, to, um, not consent. Uh, and, and, and leaves us where we are now. Um, so I, I, I don't, I, I think there would undoubtedly be some disagreements that would. Insue. I, I haven't had any conversations with, um, with Hoodview's attorney or, or Waste Connections attorney. It's a, it's a bit of an unknown. As to how that would play out.
So, just to follow up then, I would like to support, i- i- if this is an opportunity to renegotiate any aspects of that agreement, then. Certainly I would like to see us eliminate that ten year extra cycle. I think short renewal cycles create good partners. And I think that's what we'd want to have.
Yeah. Yep, Carl.
So, um, make a comment and then a question. Uh, the first comment is, uh, the cleanup day that. Council Pixel talked about, uh, the, from, for me, I use the, uh, call in. Uh, special cleanup thing and, uh, that worked out pretty well. Uh, like, I would imagine that you'll continue that until COVID. Business and maybe that's a question as well, is that, uh, we certainly have a need for, if we're not going to be able to do the cleanup in a. In mass city that we should have at least the opportunity. The biggest problem I saw was, uh, people don't always know that that's available to them. So, uh, being able to call in and have the, uh, knowledge to, uh, I can put a bunch of extra rubbish out on the. Concrete sidewalk, it doesn't always come out to people. And so, uh, that was one of those questions that did come up, but. Uh, it certainly is important that there will be an opportunity since we're part of our contracts, so. Maybe the, a question it also is, is that you intend to continue doing that until we get through the COVID or we can have a citywide? I guess that's a make, uh, question for Jason.
Yeah, um, yeah, we would continue it. I, I, a lot of them did get canceled, you know, you guys aren't alone just because of. Um, COVID, I don't know the details. If you guys put it out on the street and we drive by and pick it up or if it's, uh, an event where everybody, you know, we put boxes out in town. Everybody comes to, comes to the event, but, um, you know, our intent is to honor all the obligations that are in the current, current agreement.
Hey, thanks. Uh, then the other one, uh. I'll try not to be too specific, but, um, it is one of the things that it's all, all the part time that I've been on council, have been a few. Price increases that have come to us, um, and, uh, as a larger entity, uh. I would imagine, and maybe you can comment on this in however detail you want, that, uh, those price increases, so. Uh, wouldn't be as needed since you have a, a far larger contingent of, uh, employees, income. So on and so forth, uh, or have you had a chance to evaluate how that will look as we go through time?
I actually haven't had a chance to evaluate that, but you know, we typically, like I said, mentioned, we operate these as individual locations. So, you know, we typically, most of our agreements in Oregon have some type of annual CPI in there. Some of them are percentage, you know, 80, 90% of what the CPI is annually. But our cost and, you know, increases, especially if you look at what labor and fuel have done in the past year. You know, our labor, labor increase, it's really hard to, you know, to find drivers right now. So, you know, I guess from a cost pressure perspective, you know, we bear the same cost pressures as, you know, the K-Hoot family, family would.
Thanks. Show of questions. All right. Well, thank you, guys. We'll be back at our next meeting.
Yeah, thanks for the direction. Obviously, we'll have a conversation with Jason and Ray about your feedback and see what we can do with bringing back the consent with the revised franchise, actually, was on the comments we heard.
Right. Well, thank you for your time this evening, Jason and Ray. Appreciate it. Appreciate you guys. Thanks. All right. Proceed with our agenda. The next item, fund exchange agreement, Highway 26, Ten Eyck to Vista Loop Pedestrian Improvement Project. Man, we love this one.
Good. It's a chance for an update on, good evening again, Mayor and Council, Jordan, with the city manager. Mike Walker is here virtually to give an update on this project. I thought it was a good chance to hear an update on this, on this project, which actually, despite it taking a long time, it's still relatively on schedule for the IGA.
Relative.
Yeah, exactly. Long journey to get here, but sort of unusual request. As part of the IGA, how the city is providing funds for this project has some technicalities to it. So that's really why we're here tonight. It's also to give an update on the project and some of the decisions to come, depending on how the bids come in. There's a slight increase already that's happening with this project. So something to put on your radar if costs continue to go up. You know, we'll reach a point where we'll have a decision on whether to proceed or not with construction. So, Mike, I'll hand it off to you for the staff report.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, it seems like this comes up a couple of times a year for the best three or four years. I think we assigned the original IGA with ODOT in 2019, we had the cost increases. And then ODOT contributed some more funds, but that was their upper limit. And so now it's any other increases falls of the city to cover. And the final chunk of, the total construction cost estimate is 2.3 million, but the total project estimate is about 3.6 million. We've already spent some money on right-of-way engineering, environmental survey, you know, ODOT has spent the bulk of this, my city's contribution is about 10.6%. So the city's had about $233,000 to date. And the remaining, the way ODOT packages these projects, they kind of treat preliminary work, engineering, survey, environmental, right-of-way, completely divorced from the, to the project. Rather than just one big, specifically, construction is a completely different phase. So this would be the request for the city's contribution to the construction phase. About $685,000. As I mentioned, the staff report, we have about $662,000 in our surface transportation block grant program fund in Salem. We don't run these funds through the budget. We keep these in Salem until we have a project and we spend for the project out of these funds. So ODOT's request is that we deposit $685,000, which we don't have in our stip accounts, but we will by October 1. And so we may have to make some of this up with city funds in the interim or pledge some city funds in the interim, but the idea would be to take it all, all of the construction contribution out of this service transportation block grant funds. And that's where the, you know, the previous 233K we spent has come so very little of this has come out of this city's street fund budget. So we're recommending that we execute a fund exchange agreement with ODOT to use the remaining service transportation block grant funds in our account, lack of a better term, for this project. It's supposed to go to bid sometime in October and our lease bids will open October. We'll know what the final cost is. And as I mentioned in the staff report, if the lowest responsive bid is within 110% of the construction cost estimate, the project, the contract is let without any input from the city. If it comes in over 110% of the construction cost estimate, then the city can decide whether to proceed with the project or let it or walk away from it. So that's kind of where we're at. We won't know that until October. I should say, you know, we've seen a lot of price increases in other projects, but ODOT has a very elaborate cost database that they, you know, develop statewide for projects and in fact, they just did another bump to the construction cost estimate of about 3.5% in July, I believe. So we're pretty confident that they have a pretty good idea of the pulse of the construction market, pretty good idea of costs. So we're pretty confident in this estimate, but we'll see what happens when the bids are opened.
Questions? It just for, I mean, I think, great, it's an easy support thing, but as far as those retaining walls that go along 26 and those houses that show up, you know, between the edge of the city and the Vista Loop. Are those retaining walls? It's not clear from the drawing. Are they, I'm just curious, are they blocking pedestrians from 26 or are they on the other side of the sidewalk and blocking out the houses from the sidewalk or?
In most cases, the wall will be closer to the property line and is the highway and the sidewalk will be between the property or right-of-way line and the highway. So the walls will be between the homes and the sidewalk. It is hard to see if this plan here, but there's, you know, it's at each of the parcels where there is a retaining wall, where there's a double red line there. It, you know, there's five or six walls on that list that retained height. I think the tallest one is 13 feet. That's at the extreme east end of the project. And it's not in front of a home, it's just in front of a property. And then the, most of them are between five and 16. And that's where there's a, you know, a big fill there and a, you know, the slope down to the Sandy River is very steep right there. And that's where the tallest wall is, but you really have to zoom in, but those wall heights are on there.
Thank you.
Yep, Carl. Mike, do we have any typicals of what those retaining walls and what some of the access to the houses are going to be looking like? Have they got to that kind of stage yet? And part of my reason for asking is that some of these driveways are pretty close to the front door and I just was concerned about how they would be able to create the sidewalk and still be able to have a reasonable slope into their front door or into their garage. And so I'm just kind of wondering, are we going to create some real nasty lines, slopes? You know, difficulties. I see some of these that are on the photo are kind of twisted and turned to get in there. So we have some typicals for that yet?
We, the walls will be con, ported place, concrete walls. And then, you know, if you recall, late last fall, the city passed a resolution of public necessity for right-of-way acquisition. And so far, all the right-of-ways has been acquired. There have been no, you know, there's no, everything has been willing, a willing seller basis. And so ODOT has acquired temporary and permanent easements to make these driveways match and to align them. So there, you know, the ODOT has a standard for the maximum slope of a driveway entering a state highway and it has to be a little landing pad on that as well. So these all conform with ODOT's requirement. Most of these drivers are not the best to begin with and they certainly won't get any worse with this project. In fact, some of them will be improved. I think there's a multifamily dwelling right north of the intersection of Langenstern and Highway 26. I think it's a five-unit apartment complex and they actually have a continuous circle drive through the property. But when they were doing the research on the right-of-way, they discovered that only the easternmost driveway is permitted and that's the one that will remain there and the westernmost driveway will go away. And that driveway is very difficult to get out of already. So, you know, that's a place where they lose a driveway, but they lose one that was never permitted and it's very difficult to access. But, you know, it's tough to make the driveways meet the minimum maximum slope requirements and it's tough to maintain an ADA slope through the driveways. So there's a lot of fancy maneuvers that go on to make everything match up. So there shouldn't, like, you know, just, but just a short answer is nothing's going to get worse. Some things will get better and some things will stay the same.
And we are on schedule, right? We don't want to have to come back to us with a price increase again because of inflation, because you're talking about 110% and all that, but history has not been kind to us.
Yeah, it's always been, the schedule is always assumed an October bid letting date. And so we're sticking with that. We're able to meet that. The work will probably start after the first of the year and a lot of it's night work. So there may be a premium, but ODOT's built that into their estimate. They don't want to shut down both westbound lanes of the highway during the day. And so most of the work will take place in the, at nighttime. So, but like I said, we're, ODOT's pretty confident in the estimate. We'll see what happens. And, you know, the city has control. If it comes in over 110%, we can, the city makes the decision whether to proceed with the project or not.
Thanks. So it was okay, but you said we're going to have up to 13 feet of just poured concrete wall, no pretty facade or anything else. That'll be our, our welcome to Sandy as you're coming down the mountain?
Well, they won't be visible from the highway. The retained earth will be north of the highway. So, you know, the highway, none of them are above the highway grade. I guess that's the best way to answer that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. They're, because we're falling down.
Yeah.
Okay. So the sidewalk is below grade. So if the sidewalk's 13 feet below grade, now is it safe?
A lot of the topography out there slopes right off the highway immediately, right, Mike? So it's actually building it up so we can have a sidewalk and then the retaining walls holding that sidewalk on the highway.
Yeah, the sidewalk will be within a foot or two of the existing highway elevation in all cases. And then the retaining won't be on the fill side of the fill that takes to get up to match highway grade.
All right. Further questions, discussion, or we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I moved authorized city staff to enter to a fund exchange agreement with ODOT for 685,200 to cover the city's share of Highway 26, Ten Eyck to Vista Loop Pedestrian Improvement Project. And direct staff to return to council after bids are open if the lowest responsive bid exceeds
For a second.
All second.
There's a second, motion by Counselor Sheldon, a second by Counselor Exner. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Give me a thumbs up. Aye. Oppose nay or a thumbs down? Motion carries. Moving on in our new business agenda, guaranteed maximum price proposal for package two existing wastewater treatment plant improvements.
Go ahead, Mike. Yeah, this, you know, this is the second of three packages for the work down at the existing wastewater treatment plant. And as it, the work components, the largest work components are described in the staff report. Some electrical work, chemical feed improvements, aeration improvements in the equalization basin and some new waste and stormwater piping that will significantly reduce the amount of stormwater discharge from the treatment plant during all but the largest storm events. And then, you know, when this, when we originally looked at the estimate, it came in about $500,000 over the engineer's estimate and the wastewater advisory committee, Counselor Hokinson and Counselor Exner felt it was very important to keep the project whole. So we did not remove, one thing that we, that we could save some money on is remove the stormwater improvements, but we're going to keep those and Slayton has been able to stick very closely, in fact, come in under the estimate, some value engineering changes that they suggested. And the guaranteed maximum price is And we recommend that the council accept the GMP proposal from Slayton Construction and authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement for work package two.
Right. Questions, discussion or motion? Motion.
I move to accept the guaranteed maximum price proposal from Slayton Construction for package number two improvements, existing wastewater treatment plant. The amount of
There are second.
Is that corrected amount?
Okay. For the record, the amount is $1,477,235. And that's the motion.
Yes. You didn't say it the right words.
Is there a second? I'll second it. There's a motion by Counselor Exner, a second by Counselor Hokinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose nay or thumbs down? Motion carries. Moving forward, item 11.4, Sandy Net Business IGA with Clackamas Broadband Exchange. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. Greg Brewster, our Sandy Net Director is here tonight to present this item. I'll just preface it by saying, you know, with Greg here or virtually tonight, it is an opportunity to kind of talk about this IGA and hear any questions that we have from the council or there isn't, no, it's not a, there's no time constraints for this item. So council isn't comfortable with moving forward with anything tonight. We're happy to bring it back through consideration later. As Greg said in his report, the Sandy Net Advisory Board had reviewed this proposal at their last meeting and had a recommendation to bring it in front of the city council, but, you know, we recognize that there absolutely is questions out there and I'm sure Greg can answer some tonight and we can also get more information for you and if needed and come back with more information at a later date. But we just appreciate the opportunity to present this as an idea and as a concept that really is expanding upon a pilot project and looking more at the serving businesses with ISP services throughout Clackamas County. So Greg, let's turn it over to you to do the staff report. And again, we just look forward to hearing your questions and comments.
Yes. Thank you, Jordan. Good evening, Council. I'm bringing forth tonight a IGA between Sandy Net and Clackamas Broadband Exchange, which I'm going to call CBX from here on out. And CBX is a department of Clackamas County and has existed since 2010. Has operated as a dark fiber network, originally funded by a BTOP grant that connected large areas of Clackamas County together, ultimately creating a ring, which has been pretty beneficial for us, considering three major routes land in our data center and help us get connected to the internet for some of our ISP services. So what Sandy Net and CBX are proposing is to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the intent of being able to provide business and enterprise level internet, sorry, ISP services to businesses within Clackamas County. And underneath this agreement, CBX would construct, maintain and own the fiber optic network. The city Sandy would provide the customer experience and provide the ISP services and billing. Services would include the transit IP addresses, the hardware that would need to be put out at the site and then help desk and support if needed. So some more background information here is that Clackamas County and the city of Sandy have actually already entered into a very similar IGA back in 2019 where we partnered with CBX to provide ISP services up past Road of Dendron, denoted as a pilot project called the Quanis Project. Since then, we have transitioned customers from DSL dial-up even in some areas and satellite where the tree canopy wasn't too dense over to gigabit fiber optic. And to this day, we continue to add customers over time to it. Um, and uh, to this day, we continue to uh add customers over time to it. Uh, more recently, um, in two thousand and twenty, uh, CBX and Sandy Net jointly filed for an EDA grant. Uh, that became available to help provide uh economic relief during COVID, uh, to try to get businesses uh, uh, back in the swing of things. Uh, during uh last summer and uh, we had heard that uh, joining uh jointly filing. Uh, drastically increased our odds of uh getting such a grant. Um, unfortunately, we were not awarded the grant, uh, and so what happened is after that, uh, we have gone back, uh revised and. Really looked at it differently and then started drafting an IGA to basically say, okay, instead of building out into brand new areas. Let's tap into those that are around uh existing uh fiber lines that Clackamas County already owns. And so that kind of kicked us off into uh where we have an IGA that's before you tonight here. And so the intent of the uh both the Quanis Project and the EDA Grant and now the IGA has always been able to provide. Highly reliable and affordable service. So, um. Another key point here, um, as Sandy Net continues to grow and increases reliability, um, and solidify its footprint uh within the sandy area. Uh, we must continue to update our infrastructure. Uh, we must personal purchase additional ISP traffic, um, replace our electronics, hire additional staff, et cetera. Um, and providing business services by partnering with CBX uh provides us the opportunity to uh collect additional revenues, pay down our debts faster. Uh, achieve achieve a higher level of support for our residents as well. A couple notable examples are being able to have weekend level support. Uh, even if it's part-time, um, as well as help support and rolling out uh the next phase of uh fiber optic. Protocol, which is called XGS PON, which allows us to provide above one gig to two point five and ultimately ten gig. Uh, something that will be coming down the line here uh in the future. And uh, it's uh to help us uh maintain our our level of service that we currently give to businesses and customers. Uh, and this opportunity allows us to be able to help achieve that uh with uh very little risk uh to Sandy Net. Uh, in impacting our maintenance and operational costs. So the IGA uh did go, as Jordan mentioned, did go before the Sandy Net Advisory Board back in August nineteenth. Uh, the board did agree that uh it should be brought before uh city council with the recommendation uh to approve. Um, a couple more uh key points here as I kind of wrap up the staff report. The IGA business level agreement denotes that we would be providing uh gigabit symmetrical. Uh, active ethernet service, which is a very common uh way of delivering service that we currently do to various businesses. Uh, inside and around Sandy. Uh, the prices defined um are the minimum agreed upon uh in the IGA there and and are. Uh, actually, the cost is a little bit higher than what we would charge uh inside city business for the same level and um SLA. Um, and that in uh, sorry, that it does account for uh costs of hardware, electronic replacement. Uh, the travel time to get to a a location uh in the event of a truck roll. Uh, the IGA does offer Sandy Net a higher revenue margin, um, with uh very little risk. Um, not having to own or maintain the fiber optic network is. Would be nice, uh, not having that cost uh or burden on Sandy Net. Um, and that the IGA is bound uh by CBX's existing mainline infrastructure and uh won't leave Clackamas County. Uh, we won't be going to Washington or California or Idaho or anywhere else there. Um, so the the last final point here is that uh it is difficult to estimate, you know, how many businesses would be interested. Um, we're not really, you know, we're not going to be sending a mailer to uh every business in Clackamas County saying it's available. It's it's not. Um, but uh it would be mostly word of mouth and and opportunity as it as it arose there. Um, and uh, it it could potentially, you know. Uh, breach provide service, uh, that sentence doesn't make any sense here. Um, but uh CBX's network does include uh three hundred and sixty miles of fiber. Uh, last update I got last week. Uh, from them on that, um, that do service uh various uh schools run by businesses, uh government agencies, DMVs within Clackamas County. And it does have the opportunity to be something to grow upon in the future. So the final piece, the budgetary impact here, uh, which is uh really important. Um, is that uh we've pretty much calculated because we've we've done a lot of SLA agreements in the past uh. For businesses within town here is that our costs to initially set up service are roughly uh less than five hundred dollars. Uh, the there's very few pieces and moving parts uh for a setup of an enterprise level customer. Uh, and it's usually one of those situations, you set it up and you leave it alone and it just works. Uh, if they call, everything can be handled remotely. Uh, typically on our current SLA agreements, most of our truck rolls are for fiber breaks, which. And underneath this agreement is uh not a responsibility of the city. Um, and other than that, in terms of uh costs for uh transit or upstream ISP traffic, IP addresses, data center port costs over the lifespan of their. Uh, of their life, uh, the power needed to power the CO, the switches, uh lease space for equipment, et cetera. All come out to um less than twenty-five dollars a month on average. And so those numbers are calculated, uh reviewing our existing customers that we already service that are very similar in design and uh and deployment. And uh, those numbers do include uh some uh level of contingency to be able to anticipate equipment failure. Uh, which we do standardize your equipment. We always have some on on uh spare. It's just a truck roll to get out there and get it replaced. Um, and for installation, the county will pay uh construction costs upwards of three thousand dollars to extend it from the right of way. Uh, where their existing fiber line is to bring it up to the customer, terminate it and then allow us to come in and install the switch. Uh, anything that would be over that three thousand dollar mark uh would be additional cost paid for by the customer. And uh, per the agreement, we will receive a hundred and twenty dollars uh out of the two hundred and twenty-five dollars uh minimally, minimum established price. Uh, that the county and city have agreed upon. And uh, that does conclude kind of the budgetary information on that. Um, two more points of clarification and then I will be finished. Um, I did want to also mention that this uh IGA had been derived from our Quanis Camp one, uh, and there was one typo that did make it through. What should be say the word business does say home in the IGA there and that's an easy correction. Um, but I just want to make sure and make it clear that that was supposed to be business. Um, and then finally, um, one other piece that is confusing was confusing to me. Um, and that we had talked through with the the county multiple times, but could never really find the right verbiage to. Really make it apparent. Uh, however, it is known is that underneath section two A I. Um, is that the city has says secure all easements, leases, license and authorizations or other agreements. Um, this is does not include things like right of way permits. Uh, there's no. Uh, actual information that's really needed to gather by the city other than authorization to allow Sandy Net to service the area. Clackamas County to come in and build out fiber to it and have access for themselves or their contractors to. Uh, access and uh perform an installation. Um, since we are the one that owns the customer experience and has that point of contact, we're the ones that gets authorization and then. Gives it to Clackamas County to begin the design and ultimately go out and build the fiber optic. And with that, uh, that concludes my staff report. Um, I would be happy to answer questions.
Questions?
Comments? I, yeah, I got a few Kathleen kind of sparked them. Greg, thanks. Um, and and this is going to come across real critical and I apologize for that because I, obviously, I think you've done a lot of work. And uh, but there's some pieces that are not presented in a way that makes it obvious to me that this is a no-brainer. It it may be. So what what I'm missing i- in terms of the staff report is really a business case like presentation. And I'll just. For Jeff here, mention a few of the things that I would expect to see in it. Some of them you talk to, some of them are are buried in the staff report, some are missing. But the first one is, you know, what what exactly is the proposal? I went through it before the meeting. And I went through it again and it wasn't until you're talking that all the dots started connecting to realize exactly what we're even doing with this proposal, which is. Gain new customers outside of the city to generate revenue. So real crisp, what is the proposal? Number two, how does that align with the our goals and objectives? And I think that's where Kathleen will probably talk more about the need for, you know, a comprehensive plan that's if one existed. You know, you would cite how that would align to that. Uh, benefits, and this is the what's in it for me as a Sandy resident. Really understanding the benefit proposition. And and to get there, it's, it it sounds like there may be some economy of scale and things like that that might take. But I'd like to understand what that is. And then, of course, as you're looking at the cost and you rattle off some of them, but really. The cost to get into this business, the cost to stay in it down the road. So it's the the upfront cost plus the ongoing cost. Uh, and then, of course, the ROI, so we compare the revenue potential to the cost. So we understand, you mentioned the word, the margins are better, but there's no. Quantification of what those margins are. Then I really want to see a thorough risk analysis on it. If we're taking on responsibility, including. Getting uh agreements and licenses or whatever it is to make things happen on somebody else's site, we're acting as an agent. And Clackamas or somebody else goes out there and digs through a well or rips up something and we have who's liable? Want to make sure we understand what risk we're taking on with with the proposition. And there there's a certain assumption built into this whole proposal then, which is the um. The take rate and the marketing. And so there's really no, you talked about, we're not going to be sent a flyer. To everybody, but you didn't talk about what is the marketing campaign? How long will it take to reach your projections and so forth? So. This feels like a business expansion, so I think it deserves a business case. And that's what I expect to use in it. And and then. The last one is, once you get all that and it looks really great, you still have to make a decision. Is this the best use of our time and money? Are there other? Places we could go and put our energy into that would be a better value for the same effort and money? So that's what I'm looking for. That's a lot, but thank you.
So, echoing kind of what Don was saying. Greg, I I love Sandy that I rave about it all the time on Facebook and you guys rock. Rock the whole, you you know, the work that Jeremy's done in setting all this up and and everybody else that was involved. It's just phenomenal. It's such an accomplishment. And that said, a- and we did it all on kind of like a shoestring and and you know, we hired these young people to kind of. Help us get started and it's just been so successful beyond our wildest dreams. And it's the future and. We have so much to be proud for, proud of. And I want to see it grow and I want to see people, you know, I want to have see everybody in Sandy and and the Sandy Urban Reserve. Be, you know, have access to it and be able to use it. I want it to be something that's financially solvent and, you know. Making us money and also covering all our costs. But what's kind of. Stopping us at this point is that we don't have a business plan. That I've seen, maybe we do and I've not seen it. So if we do, I want to see that. I want to see just the kind of things that. Don just mentioned, you know, return on investment. This IGA scares me because what it's saying is that we are going to be the internet provider. For all of Clackamas County, Wilsonville, Candy. I mean, can you imagine just the drive times to get down to? You know, some obscure place down in Wilsonville. That's a two-hour, four-hour round trip as we know, when we start driving in those directions. Um, and so the hundred, you know, I mean, some of the costs you've mentioned don't even begin to cover those costs. Is this EG IGA requiring us to provide the service or can we say no thanks on a connection? That's one question, based, you know, based on the location, the complexity, whatever. What are all the costs of, I don't even know what that two I is. You know, it's easements that I know what an easement is and. Those take a long time to get acquired and involve lawyers and all sorts of other work. So I don't know what all the things are even, you know, the, what all is even involved in two I. Or two II or two III. I want to see kind of what all those involve and the cost for delivering those. How many business customers will require to, you know, I mean, the the blessing that we've had with with the sending that has been so successful. That, you know, it's it's a big deal. We have to wait a long time to get connected just here in Sandy, right? What's the wait time to get connected here in Sandy right now? Can you just tell me that?
Uh, it depends on whether or not there is a um fiber existing art already at the side of the house. If it exists at the side of the house, it takes, um. It's usually within a day or two. If it requires construction and it's a hand dig, it can usually be resolved within a week. If it requires extensive boring, um, it takes a couple of weeks plus sometimes.
Um, so. You know, we have no idea whether we're going to get five fifty, five hundred, five thousand requests for service uh is from these businesses. And um, we don't have any idea how much it's really going to cost to connect those. We have this three thousand dollar estimate, but it's really hard to kind of. I think anticipate all the unique situations that you're going to run into when you go to try to hook them up. Um, and we're going to be on the hook for getting all the funds from the customers on these things. Whether it's over the three thousand dollars or their monthly bill that then and then getting the county their money. Um, how many additional positions will this this expansion require? What happens when customer service calls delay Sandy residents? What's the wait time for, I already asked that. So I have so many questions and and so little information. From a financial standpoint. But even bigger, the 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 lack of information that we have on, what is our mission? Our mission is to provide internet services to Sandy residents. We are not, you know, expanding our empire to be the. Service provider for all of Clackamas County is something that I don't plan to. Agree to do on a two-page IGA. It's just, we're already providing the the. Transit service for everything from government camp to esticated to Gresham. We're providing library services covering hoodland and all these other areas. And we're not even getting the enough money back from the county to cover the cost of providing those services. Um, this just really scares me. I just. I I want Sandy Net to be successful. I want it to grow, but I just feel like we need to get a master plan done immediately. And it's got to include the biggest important, most important thing that you do with these utilities. Is you have a utility rate assessment that really looks at all those costs of providing the services, the true cost. The cost for vehicles and depreciation and all those other things that and personnel and pensions, you know, retirements, all the other costs. To provide the services and then you kind of figure out. That economy of scale. And once we have that economy to scale, then we kind of start saying, well, do we want to? Expand it just to the, you know, urban growth boundary or do we want to, you know, go to Wilsonville or Candy with our 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 services? So. I just feel like we're getting way out in front of us and. I want us to kind of come back and really take, do the the business plan and the master planning. To make sure that what we're doing is benefiting Sandy residents, Sandy taxpayers. And growing it in a more. Constrained direction. Now, I don't even constrain, but just, you know, in a more logical direction. This just seems like we're just kind of. You know, throwing ourselves out there and we don't even know what we have, what we want, where we want to go or anything. So I know that sounds all negative and I'm trying to kind of, you know, do an Oreo cookie here and just tell you that it really does. You know, make me so proud to see what Sandy Net has been come and so excited to see what Sandy Net can be for us. And it's because your hard work and your staff and Jeremy and the and the um, the board. I just feel like we need a little bit more, um, you know, planning and business planning and. Utility rate assessment stuff before we sign off on this.
Okay, thank you. Um, if you, I I'd be happy to respond to at least a couple of these here right now. These are a couple. These are pretty easy questions. Uh, I'd be happy to clarify on. Um, the return on the investment is um, is four to five months. Uh, after signing into a an SLA agreement. Um, and that would cover the installation costs, uh, which have been pretty standardized uh across these cookie cutter uh installations. Um, and the piece I want to make sure is is clear on this is that when our crew were to go out and install these, um. The fiber is ready to go. We just plug in our equipment, plug in their equipment and then verify connectivity and we're on our way. There is no construction, there is no uh troubleshooting that has to be done, that is all handled uh by Clackamas County. Uh, and part of their responsibility for that. Um, and and we can definitely, when we're going through this process, if we identify one that doesn't make sense or beneficial. We have the app, we have the opportunity to say, no, thank you. You know, there's no reason for us to engage in something that doesn't uh, that won't benefit us in some way. So those are the two pieces. I I definitely was like, those are, uh, those are um, some easy ones that I'm like, they're um, they're. Kind of easy to get around.
Thank you. I I know you have lots. I I I just want to say a couple of things really quick, um, and that's not to discount. Because I'm only going to take one snippet. So that's not to come anywhere close to trying to discount all that's been expressed and said or. Or disagree with all of it. There's, I certainly do not disagree with all of that has been said tonight. But I do want to reiterate those. I think that there's far more benefit to our our community members in Sandy than just, you know. you know, kind of growing our empire, you know, out of the city. I think some of those have been expressed here tonight. I mean, one is, is we still have a considerable amount of debt load, you know, with Sandy net that we're, we're still paying down. And the ability for us to get additional revenue streams at a very high rate of return allows us to pay down that debt load quicker and faster, which is a direct benefit to our residents here in Sandy. There is also additional services like weekends that, uh, of being able to take calls of different items that are also available. So there are some economies of scale. And so my only point there is, is when we do have, you know, bottom line figures that we do owe it. Taxpayer, I think of taxpayers and investors in our, in our business, in our community here in Sandy. We do have taxpayer return on investment that we need to be able to create as a result of paying down this debt load that we have with Sandy net. And so I just, I said, obviously that little snippet is only taking a little piece of what was said over on the side of the Rossburn tonight. So I'm not trying to discount everything that was said, but I do think there needs to be a little bit of a broader thinking, understanding as to what kind of value our community gets when we engage in that ITs like this. Um, Jeremy, get some comments.
Yeah, I just want to say, uh, that, uh, this is a topic that, um, came up with the Sandy net board, uh, Greg presented there and in the discussion there, a lot of things, uh, I'll just kind of share with you as well as what they had said there. You know, what, uh, the mayor just said, the benefit of this does bring in revenue. And so, um, that was a little, really small amount of cost. We aren't doing any construction. Um, as Greg had pointed out in that, it says in there, you know, the county is on the hook for doing that. The drive out there to install would be to install, uh, switch, kind of like, you know, the size of your laptop there. You put it in, connect it and you're on your way. Amount of workload and talking with Greg, um, on that and, uh, there's like he has mentioned there is uh, these type of customers, enterprise customers are very low. Very, very low, um, troubleshooting, uh, are needing to, to have the support in that fashion. It can be done remotely ninety-nine percent of the time. And also, like I said, the county is required to do the maintenance of the fiber, the connectivity, literally putting on the connection at the other end. In that, um, when it comes back to benefiting our community, this is benefiting our community in it, as the mayor had pointed out. Bringing in the revenue that, uh, for that piece of it, um, the, a minimum of a hundred and twenty dollars is what's in the agent, uh, the thing for client. A, a minimum of that. That's what it says in the IGA.
To be clear, the numbers we're Catholic and are asking about are not stated right now. It's a per person or per account, but we do not have the actual plan on how many customers we're going to target.
So how many customers would target? And like Greg had mentioned there, um, it's not to grow an empire. Um, you know, it, it take a kind of a offense to the idea that we are creating an empire. That's not the intent of it. It's the intent to make sure that it is, it succeeds in our community. Um, and that's the intent of it to grow an empire, um, outside of it. Um, it's just to bring back, to make it better in our own community here. And by doing that, the revenue coming in. So could it be five? Could it be 10 from what was presented and that, uh, that number, uh, as Greg had pointed out? You know, we don't have to take those customers or any customers, you know, need, but that money would pay for the service itself. Plus a lot more on it. So compared to what, um, a customer inside Sandy, the city here pays, as you know, though, um, it's, it's quite a bit more than that. That service there. In the plan of building out, uh, the same fiber there was always too extended to help pay for the revenue here. The point with using the, them as the transport is they only have a ring. They don't, they don't go everywhere in the county. They, they have this, this ring that goes around. And so it's, uh, ability, and it goes by a lot of other areas that have great service too. So the idea of going into Candy, Candy has great service already with a direct link and Candy tell and same with Malala and others as well. On that, but there are rural areas and other areas that don't have these type of services that are along the ways. They'll be paying the installation. That's what costs the most that takes, um, the longest to recover. We won't be paying any of it. Um, in that aspect of, uh, building out that fiber or getting into it, they'll be doing all of that. Piece of it. So when we talk about finding ways, when we went through the budgeting committee there and going and saying, hey, we want to get, uh, revenue positive on Sandy net. Um, that was a big push. If you recall, everyone was saying that like, hey, we don't have it subsidized and we didn't. But to do that, we've been thinking outside the box of how to do that, how to bring in more revenue to do that. Allowing us to, um, do things like if we have more revenue coming in on these easier ones, being able to hire what was presented a possibly someone on the weekends or other timeframes to help support internally, uh, the whole standing it. Help on that. So anyways, just wanted to put that out there. Uh, Sandy net already does businesses outside, uh, the city limits and around the county and uses that. I think the difference is the having it be the one, payment process of that, uh, piece of it that we would be doing uh, as, uh, one build versus having it built to do different people like others do now. So, um, anyway, those are things I've, I've heard. As far as the master plan, yes, we are in the process of that. But do we give up a, uh, the opportunity, um, to not pick up more revenue coming in on? In the meantime, to do that master plan, those plans do take a while.
Thank you. I have something bad. Yeah. Um, so, you know, I, I kind of got to disagree a little bit with, with Don and Kathleen about this. And that is that I do actually think that they've had a pretty good plan in here. Um, I think it is outlined pretty good. Uh, five hundred dollars per customer is the cost. Uh, but the city gets a hundred and twenty per customer minus twenty-five dollars a month. It's pretty clearly outlined in, in the staff report there. Um, it also says the county will pay three thousand dollars and the additional costs will be buried by the customer. So I kind of think that it, it is outlined about as good. I personally support this better without the broad business model, because you know, one of the things about Sandy net, I, I remember moving here. Uh, nobody gave me a flyer for Sandy net. It was word of mouth. And it's the customer service and stuff that, you know, that sitting on the Sandy net board that I heard, hey, I got awesome customer service. This is why I've heard it. We heard people actually say, I stayed in Sandy because of Sandy net. So I think kind of the business model pay for itself. And instead of going out there and throwing our name out there and getting kind of bogged down, letting it grow as, as a word of mouth at a slower rate may actually benefit us as we slowly increase our funds. Because the other thing that's in here is when you read the staff report. It says in here, you know, that, um, the pay, helping pay down debts, but also higher level, higher levels of support for residents and existing customers such as employees for weekend support. And this is the other thing that I think is really cool, is the support slash rollout of ten gig to the existing customers in business. And it goes on to say with virtually no risk or minimal additional ongoing maintenance and operational costs. So I think anything we can do to, to keep, stay ahead of the game in a ever evolving, um, world of online, uh, only benefits it, um, the, the actual, or the city people that are living here in the city, it only benefits us. So I'm personally for this.
Glad that, uh, Richard went ahead and made his statement because quite a bit of that is what I was going to reply. I, I do like this potential for getting a city to be able to have a better response on weekends. More economical benefits for being able to take care of the debt that needs to be paid off to maybe in a quicker method. Uh, I, I do have a couple of questions, uh, then I want to shorten this conversation up, say ditto to Rich. So a couple of things either for Greg or for Jeremy is, what was the intention of the board to be able to to go into an IGA with the county? What, what was it about the economics? Was it about the potential for increasing the business? What was your intention and why did you, was your impetus for moving forward in something like this?
Well, you answer a great, I don't care.
Either one of you, whichever. I'm trying to just get a feel for, what did you guys have in mind when you were presenting this?
That's fine. I don't care. Well, I mean, I was there as the liaison. I can tell you what they discussed, but I mean, I was the liaison, Kathleen, so I can't speak.
And the leadership.
So, um, but Greg, go ahead. I
Yeah. Um, so a lot of it was economics. Um, we have, one of our members is an actual, um, uh, CPA and, uh, one of his big things that was glaring that came out was, uh, that we do have debt, we'd need to pay down there. Um, and when he was reviewing it, uh, he did, uh, uh, he did approve it as well, uh, stating that, uh, very simply, he was the one that spoke the least about it actually and just said, any opportunity to generate more revenue to pay down debt is, makes sense. And, uh, and, and that was, you know, very easily put for that, but, uh, that was kind of, uh, the point on the economic side there. Couple other members, um, one of our members actually works in the telecom industry and, uh, upon, you know, seeing that we don't have, you know, things like that, that we can support or, you know, having to brought the network engineer on weekends to, to handle some of these things is that, uh, it's going to have to get a little bit more growth before, uh, we can get that person on board to, uh, uh, handle that, that part-time weekend, even if it's only for Saturday. Uh, it's still beneficial to be able to do an install. Uh, there's a lot of people that move in on Fridays and they have to wait until Monday to get service. Um, and there's, those are things like that our competitors do that we don't. And so there, there's definitely room for, uh, using, uh, that, those opportunities to, uh, continue adding customers so that we can provide those services, uh, to our customers. Um, another one is it, uh, it does generate and bring revenue into Sandy that's, uh, not coming from inside city limits essentially. Um, and, uh, that just helps bring money into Sandy and, uh, gets, and gets spent on our community hopefully.
And I'll add to that last point there. It, one of the things that was discussed there was Greg brought up that map, the same map that you saw earlier there and they talked about wanting to, uh, be able to have the revenue to, to build out to those places as well. Now, we talked about using some other funds to help do that. But they're like, if we can bring in more, more revenue, we can, that is, takes little or no time to, to build up. We can expand inside the, the trailer parks and the, the multifamily dwellers. So and they, they were wanting to make sure everyone in Sandy also would be able to get it.
Right. We have spreadsheets that show what the expected, like there's going to be some additional personnel costs for this. There's going to be additional equipment costs and vehicle costs and all those other things. And so that's, I think, what I'm kind of looking for here is y'all keep mentioning revenue, which is great, but with that comes a whole lot more costs. There, and, and so that's where, you know, that you know, and just telling me that it's five hundred dollars when, when all of a sudden now we have to hire two more people or three more people to, to deal with all the demands. We need to include those costs for developing these, for delivering these services. And I'm not hearing what those are.
Well, we're not hiring people to, um, do this project necessarily. Um, this project would help facilitate to allow us to expand our, our workforce, not just for a business project, but for Sandy net as a whole. Um, and so it's not that we know, we're not bringing on two new people if we engage in this project, uh, to work on it. Um, the amount of time this, uh, this requires, uh, two people to touch to create a new account. Network engineers provisions the equipment that takes less than thirty minutes. Um, it's a cut and paste code. The, uh, the person that goes out and stalls it, and oftentimes, um, I can actually, uh, get assistance on getting someone out there to, uh, get it taken care of. Um, if someone's heading that way, a lot of times in the past, uh, and, and some other customers, if someone's going along the way, we have them go plug the switch in for us. It actually, uh, you know, saves us some time, sometimes. Uh, but you know, you're talking the mere number of miles, the cost of gas and then that, that technician's time, which it would be an installation tech that has to go out and plug it in. Once he goes out and plugs it, he calls us, our network engineer verifies that it's online, adds it to the monitoring system, sets up billing, and then they call if they have any issues. Um, there, uh, you know, there's no splicing involved or, or termination of anything. It's plug-in. If you get light, great. Uh, and the lights tested before, that's part of the, the requirement is that the path has to be completed and operational. Uh, that's not something that, you know, we even have to, uh, take care of in that case. And so, um, in terms of, of man hours, it's, you know, the travel time, plugging it in, uh, you know, I would say less than an hour onsite and then the cost, uh, to there and back is your travel time. And then the vehicle wear is the amount of miles that you could calculate uh, across, um, I, I would think depreciation of the vehicle or whether or not you do it over miles or years. And then, uh, the costing gas and maintenance, uh, which is already included regardless of, if it was being used. Um, and so that's why, you know, I was thinking, you know, we're saying is the, depending on how many customers are being, uh, added and it's not like we're going to be adding nine customers a week, you know, that's inside city limits that we're adding customers at that rates like that. This is, uh, as it becomes available, um, you know, one a month or something, you know, it's, uh, as, as it becomes available. And so you take three hours out of a work week, maybe once a month, and you get the opportunity to add a business customer to it. Um, otherwise that person would either be, um, you know, it's, uh, the idea is that, uh, I mean, it could be the network engineer that goes plugs it in as well. Also, if someone's doing an install, it's not, it, it's not a very extensive process, so to say. And so, uh, if, at least, you know, in the, in the short term and mid-range term, it won't require another employee. It just requires a couple of hours of work. Compared to the hours it costs to dig fiber up to a home, perform an indoor installation as well. Um, it's, it's not, uh, it's not drastic or in a lot, in almost every case, it's cheaper to do these kinds of installs than it would be to dig and hook up brand new ones in a lot of ways. And so, um, you know, if you have the, the time available to be able to send a technician out to go do one of those, it, it greatly increases that without, you know, anything.
I really like the chance to comment. Okay, a couple of things. Um, Greg, I appreciate that, but I think you dodged the question completely. I think you're, you're, and it's not that we're missing the whole question. We're just looking at it the wrong lens. I'm not here to say that this is a bad plan. What I am here to say is all revenue is not equal to Kathleen's point and Rich, I do take difference of opinion with you that just to go after revenue for revenue sake does not make sense. When I ran, made pizzas in my pizza oven, I got one oven, it'll make so many pizzas. If it's not making that many pizzas, to add a few more is great. You know, that revenue is good. If I go over my capacity, it, I have to expend more money to grow. Now, we already heard tonight from staff that this will allow us potentially to add staff for weekends. That is a hire. So that is additional people. The question is when? And that's what the plan, that's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for visibility, transparency into what is the plan? Are we going to bring on twenty new business customers at these high rates over the next six months? That will then justify filling out my weekend rates that will then give my Sandy customers an added benefit. Or is it, it feels like a good thing? And so we're just going to chase it for as long as we go. Because I got to tell you, that's what I heard. And that's what Scott Lazenby pitched when we started Sandy net way back in the day and we had one tech to do seven by twenty-four support, the whole of Sandy net. And I argued with him. And Scott was blind to the fact that you had these other costs. The department we have now is what I, because I managed an IT group back then. I knew what it took to, to manage one and Scott didn't. But he's like, we're going to just do it on a shoestring. We eventually got there. You guys have that department now. All I'm saying is now let's have that same discipline. Let's look at it, write it down, present to us. I don't need to know two hours for this and depreciation. I just need to have it all summarized. You do have a CPA on your, your team. You should be able to summarize this into a one-page, two-page business plan. I mean, she's probably done it a hundred times to make sure this makes sense. And, and then when you present it, it's a no brainer. And I apologize, but I feel like we've gone into a lot of detail we didn't need to. When all we really need to understand is, is this a good deal for Sandy or not? And there are lots of pieces that make me think it might be. But I don't have the proof. I cannot honestly say this is a good thing with transparency for Sandy today with the information I've been provided.
I don't think we'll know how many customers want to come on board because
There better be a plan.
Well, just in the fact that, you know, that's not, uh, like he was saying, we're not going out marketing across the board on this, right? So, um, as far as that goes.
But, but make a projection. It's like a sales projection. You got to make a plan. But, but make projection, it's like a sales projection. You gotta make a plan.
I'd like to make a statement in this, uh, that, that to some degree, I on board with Dawn in that there ought to be some regulation, some sort of description of how we're going to build ourselves into this thing. And that, what point do we say? That we can't do the same things that we expect to do for our own customers within Sandy. Boundaries. And I think that's really, uh, for me important is, is at one point do we say we are not able to continue without going to larger staff? Uh, more equipment, maybe more trucks, those kind of things. I think that's one of the things that I've been hearing in the last half an hour or so that I would like to hear of. Uh, in terms of making money and making our payoffs quicker, I, I think this has a lot of potential for that. And, and basically in support of this thing, but I do think there are an opportunity for us to say to the council that there is, here's a strategy that we're going to be using to be able to decide when, how, how many we're going to take on, when, when that point becomes important to start adding either equipment or, uh, personnel. And I think that's something that really it's always been important for us to be at least aware of, if not approval for. So I, I think with a little bit more information, then, um, I'm not sure I need all the detail of an ROI and that kind of thing. But I do think there, there is some in my mind, some support for getting more detail about where we are going to be, how we're going to grow through this. So we don't go out of the, uh, ends of our ability to keep high-quality service to the citizens of Sandy, which I hear all the time. I hear that the city of Sandy is pretty pleased with the way we're operating, how we respond. I know whenever I need a question, I get almost immediate responses. So to keep that going, I, I guess I would like to be sure that that's going to be in the works.
So, I, I had a quick. Greg, can you answer that at all? Do you have, uh, an idea about your capacity? Like, how many more customers would it take before you would have to actually start increasing staff? Do you have an idea of that? I mean, I think it is a reasonable question.
How many more of these business customers or customers in general for Sandy Net?
Yeah, it, how many of these business customers would it take to trip that you're going to start needing additional staff upon that? Or to, to operate?
To operate? Hesitant to just, uh, give a number out here. I would be more than happy to put together. Sorry, I'd be more than happy to put together a number for it here. Um, I believe we were looking before we even started to really run into issues with staff time, we're probably looking at forty or fifty of these customers over the, um, you know, being added that, you know, we might start seeing any sort, any sort of need there. Um, mostly around the point of, once it's set up, if, you know, it's, it's a one-and-done sort of situation typically, and then it's the one-off, uh, support call in the event that something happens.
Right, so, alright, so I'm just going to look to try to move us forward and summarize this a little bit. So I'm hearing, uh, vast support from the majority of council and the overall concept of this idea. And so let's keep this moving, discussion moving forward. Let's have staff return, uh, to our next council meeting. Um, Greg and, uh, Jordan, I think you've heard from, uh, a variety of counselors on kind of what we expect to be seen at that next, that meeting, a bit of a ramp up, a planned ramp up as to how you would take on these customers, how it would affect our, uh, our current, um, services here to our neighbors here in Sandy. But you've got to show some cost too, because if, at to Kathleen's point, if we are sending one of our staff members outside of Sandy to do one of these hookups, that is drive time. I mean, if they're going out to Canby and then back to Sandy to get to one of our, at one of our, you know, customers or then to somebody else, that is a lot more capacity that we're, that employee is taking on. So show us how we're going to do this, how we're going to ramp up into it. I don't think we have to, you know, just ruin your next week and a half, two weeks to do this. Uh, but you know, just a little bit more of a narrative as to, as a path forward. And Greg, with that, I really do think you're going to get, you know, council support into something like this. I just, I think we need a little bit more information.
Thanks.
Okay, alright. So with that, let's go ahead and table this discussion to our next city council meeting. Ms. Mayor, I can do that, it's my understanding. And, uh, let's move, uh, ahead to our report from the city, uh, from the city manager.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple, couple of updates for you. Um, we have a, well, one, um, first thing is on the special services grant program. If you recall from the budget, um, process with the budget committee, uh, in the economic development department, we have, um, a biennial grant program where uh, the city collects applications. There was a grant committee, they review, and then we provide funds to nonprofit organizations that are within the city of Sandy. Um, we usually kick off that process after, uh, the budget is adopted, um, that funds these organizations for a couple of years. Um, the applications are usually project-specific. Um, and you can imagine that nonprofits are the community that usually receive funds. And I think um, a few counselors have been on that committee in the past. Uh, this year, I think, um, to simplify the process honestly, and then we're kind of looking for your feedback on this, is just to bring the application straight to city council, uh, for your review, uh, rather, uh, than establishing another committee, uh, committee or task force to review these. I think committee in the past had, uh, the chamber of commerce and, and a large member and then a couple of city counselors and, and the staff person to staff it. Um, I think, uh, there's probably interest at the council to, to kind of take a look at these. Um, it also provides an opportunity for you guys to talk about this program more at a programmatic level. Uh, if this is, uh, a program that you want to maybe change the criteria, uh, simplify it, what kind of data or application information you need in the application. So that's our proposal. I'm kind of giving you a heads up that we'll be, uh, we're recommending, um, moving it towards, uh, just bringing the applications, uh, for your review, uh, directly to the city council. Um, an update.
Jordan, I'm sorry, so are you planning on bringing that, like a work session type of deal where we're going to talk about that or?
Would you like it a work session or would you like it, uh, to discuss first? Or would you like a work session to talk about the applications themselves?
Well, Tony, for my, and I think you've been on that committee with me, and I think it's you, Carlos. I just, I feel like the discussion, there needs almost a discussion and then bring it in front of council instead of doing it all at once. Yeah, I, I think a work session would be good for the council and then to kind of bring that discussion for an official vote to the council.
What's the amount we're talking about?
Sixty thousand, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, I sent an email about my conversation with the city of Portland and the regional arts and culture council. I talked to the public arts manager there and, and, um, and then communications manager for RAC, um, you know, the long, short, story short, uh, they're, they're a year or two away from making the decision whether they're going to keep the statues in their art collection, um, and then they have a process for determining, uh, the future of that artwork, including where it may go. So um, my guess is we still have about a year to go until they understand what they're going to do with it, whether they're going to keep it, and then what their process will be in determining where the statues might go. So um, at that time, you know, if there's still interest, uh, we can explore whether there's a way to acquire it through, uh, that process that they'll lay out. Um, you heard about the LLC, uh, conferences council. Um, we talked a little bit about that before, um, a bummer. I know we all enjoy that. Doesn't seem like there's much of a virtual component to that. Uh, free, uh, to tune in if you like. I think it's just a general membership meeting and things like that. We will be reimbursed for, uh, the cost of that.
So, I, and I didn't read through it, so I didn't even see the virtual part. So is there going to be, because I know the Oregon marriage association, this leadership elections, LLC, this leadership elections during that time, I think. Do you know if they plan to move ahead during, is that kind of what the virtual aspects are?
Yeah, yeah.
It's the one that everyone goes to.
Um, speaking of that, I think they request that we have a voting.
Everyone goes.
Yeah, I, I elect Stan to go to that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Believe me, guys, you don't want to go. It's dry as paint, it's drying. Stan, you're elected.
Um, and then finally, update on the fireworks. So we're still trying to, uh, the school district is, you know, obviously in busy mode right now for obvious reasons, uh, today especially, but um, really trying to get their permission, uh, on a couple of key dates that we've, um, identified. It's a Saturday in October would be, um, what we're proposing. That gives the fireworks company enough time to get into town and set up and, um, prepared. Um, it's getting darker sooner, so, um, you know, during school year, it's kind of nice to be able to set them off a little bit earlier. One of the dates, so the second, the ninth and the thirtieth, I'll throw this out there, like a spooky spectacular sort of thing, you know, on Halloween weekend, it'd be the Saturday before Halloween, we could hand out candy, do fireworks. I don't know, I mean, the weather probably won't be great, but you know, in the, years ago, Fourth of July used to be kind of rainy. Anymore.
Winter's homecoming.
Oh, that's.
Homecoming is, I think this.
The issue is that I think they need a thirty-day period to get the permit. Is that correct, Tyler?
It was thirty days before, um, the public events and that before they put the state fireworks. I don't know what homecoming is, but I would assume there's some challenges. Fallout zone, uh, both are part of the parking lot and then other physical challenges of getting students and families and whatnot in and out of the zone, but we can definitely.
We, we can ask, but I thought one of the issues is homecoming was a little too soon, it's coming up. Um, but the, that was the other issues. We're going to take up a lot of that real estate in order to have the falls on everything. So that affects our parking and, you know, it's going to be crowded and all that. Would be cool though, but.
It would be cool.
So those are the dates, uh, we're open to other dates too, if we want to wait.
So Halloween or what?
Any other weekend in October.
You know, Halloween is one, um, we don't have October fast, April, I guess.
I like the idea of Halloween dates. That's some logic. I was hoping for some sort of celebration that would be attached to it to go, Halloween kind of makes that. We have a great, uh, Halloween trail that we do every year and it's just very, very well, well, attended. Maybe that would be a good thing to do after the end of that.
Is the haunted house coming back this year?
It is not. They have relocated to Canby, um, actually, and they've, uh, fully vacated, um, their space there.
They, however, though, they stored it for how long?
Yeah.
And then decided to go to another community.
Why did they move?
They found a permanent location down there. You know, our, our concern with them setting a permanent shop there was, you know, planning, you know, a future and, you know, their plans with COVID too, so. What's that?
They acquired a place?
I don't know if they acquired or they got a lease or, or what.
Alright, so I, I guess, uh, council, tell me if I speak for us or not. I, I think we just would like to see the fireworks go off. I think we were worried that it's, uh, we lose, we use it or lose it by January first. Uh, we have worse and worse. Winter is coming. You know, um, and so whether it's Halloween or, uh, you know.
Are there other holidays in October out there?
There's a.
That's when all the school.
There's a Veterans Day in the beginning of November. But that's a little later in.
But I don't think it'll be real popular.
Yeah, none of the holidays are the right kind of holiday for.
Hey, what about, I, I, I think the Halloween one's probably the best.
Yeah, Halloween trail.
Yeah, I think that's. So the Kiwanis and the Key Club, put on their Boo Bash, you know, I mean, maybe it's just a really cool Boo Bash this year. I don't know, maybe, yeah, Halloween could work though. Could be just another football game, you know, I don't know, maybe pick the right, not, you know, give enough time, but. I mean, I understand, like to Tyler's point that, you know, it's hard with the landing zone and everything. But there is something about it already having an audience, already having an event, you know, people are used to going to the high school anyways. I think with the fireworks at the end of the football game or something like that creates an even maybe a bigger audience for the game. I don't, you know, but it doesn't, we could build around something with a built-in audience. I would like to see it in Sandy, you know. I want to go over to like Leopold's. It's like, let's do it here. Like Halloween, it's, I think we have less variables to worry about, especially around.
Yeah, okay. We'll keep working on that. Thank you.
Good, okay, done.
Well, um, sorry for our heated discussion on things that shouldn't take much time, but I think I encourage all of us just, you know, to see if we can't just bring a little more transparency and, and rigor to staff, you know, some of these things and don't get, I love staff. You, you guys all work so darn hard and I appreciate you a lot. So when we have these hard ones, know, know that I still love you. So uh, with that, our committees are working, um, real hard. Uh, the pool committee is kind of getting things going again with the consultant coming onboard and the, uh, larger community campus aquatics team of the three of us are to get a little traction, I think, and we should have some neat materials for a work session in the not too distant future.
Yeah, I guess I would like to reiterate that it feels like we're starting to see some some good ideas coming up out of the aquatic committee. And then, uh, we had a really good conversation with lots of pictures and I'm a picture guy about the different possibilities for who will land the aquatic and all the community centers. I'm really interested and excited about that. Um, another little bit of a different viewpoint, uh, the B committee, me meeting, I don't, not a committee, I'm not sure what it is, but.
Am I on it?
No.
Yeah, wear your suit.
Yeah, wear your suit, yeah. No, um, it's basically, uh, like the Tree City thing. They've got a community of teachers and, um, a staff person who is Shelley Dennison, who's kind of sponsoring that. And I don't know if that's, it will eventually ever become anything more than just, uh, like the Tree City folks are doing their thing and putting together, um, some gardens maybe, and maybe some other activity events, as well as they have these, uh, children that provided a whole bunch of information about what they would like to see to have the city of Sandy be a better, um, B city. And I think that's really kind of cool, but I guess we've had, that are go out and that kind of thing. So that's really been positive that we have been able to thank them for doing all that work this past summer. So I'm glad to see that one moving forward. You're going to hear me say this again and again. I know it's been put upon pause, but I think the art committee is getting to the point where, uh, like here are things that we really should be responding to in a format that brings that stuff forward. And one of the things that really struck me was, I think it was last Saturday, we had the hundred and tenth, uh, anniversary celebration for the city of Sandy's, uh, birthday and we did it at the plaza and man, that puppy was hot. I, I, I tried to sit outside in the sunshine, but it just didn't make it. So I had to go find me some shelter. Uh, we had talked one time, and I don't, not proposing this, it's just something that we had talked about as a art committee was having some sail cloths over top of that thing that would provide not only an art format, but also shade and provide a place that would be making a little bit more comfortable rather than the heat source for the next time, uh, bake committee. But I think it's, it's starting to become obvious to me that I think we need to start rethinking about putting together the art committee and coming up with some of these decisions. I know, uh, we've talked a bunch about all the master plans that are going on, but uh, we need to put together some sort of conversation about, uh, the art side of the city of Sandy. And I would just put that out there, that when, I would love to hear from staff when they're, feel like they have some more time now, like can contribute to having a staff member support that. Uh, but I'd see, um, reasons around the city that an arts committee would be helpful and some of the things that are happening at this point. Other than that.
Thank you, sir. Kathleen?
Um, speaking of Leopold's, uh, the corn cross, uh, race, that's a, a cyclocross bike race that is, um, put on by the city of Sandy every year. And, uh, it wasn't last year, every other year, um, for quite a few years. It's a fundraiser and it's, um, it's raised money for Bark for the Park. And there's quite, there's about three hundred and fifty people, uh, quite a few people come over from Bend and spend the night in our hotel. So it is uh, something that also encouraged tourism, um, and Carol Cohen is doing a great job at, she's gotten all these, um, prizes donated and coordinating with all the sponsors and she's doing a great job at, at pulling out the date of the race is September eighteenth. And if you want to see what corn cross is all about, come on out to Leopold's and watch it. I'm really thrilled to, um, be, um, going to the Parks and Recreation Director, um, interviews to, um, see our candidates. I think, you know, I did a little bit of Googling on their names and seems like we have some really good, uh, good candidates. So thrilled to see that, um, position kind of move forward. Um, the library is doing very well and they've got, um, you know, they're open for business and doing a great job. The homeless, um, camp that we cleaned up a few weeks ago. I, I want to make sure, Jordan, that the cops have been out there because they did issue an exclusion order and a some sort of, you know, warnings or something, but there was still a lot of stuff out there that we weren't allowed to, um, clean up that day. And so it'd be nice to make sure that got followed up. day. And so it'd be nice to make sure that got followed up. And then also that if they could just kind of go out there and kind of keep an eye on it to make sure that they just don't overturn and all the stuff. The, I am interested in the cop plan process and the interviews for the consultants. I think who's doing, is that Rich and Lori that are on that?
You know, Lori is. Shelley.
Is there anybody else?
Planning commission.
Okay. But anyways, I'm very interested in how that goes because I think that's going to, you know, the consultants we get for that will really inform the final product. I am again, very interested in seeing our Sandy net proceed as soon as possible with a master plan slash business plan. I think because, you know, we talk about all the debt service and stuff we have, and I don't really have a good handle on, you know, all the moving pieces and honestly, you know, it can get pretty technical when you start talking all those acronyms and all. So I would love to see something like that proceed and use that art of money for it because it's just, there's just no greater need, I think. Also, I appreciate seeing the cops out here recently on bluff road with especially with the school traffic. That's all I have.
Uh, yeah. So planning commission, obviously they just said it's been kind of a slow, not much to report there because summer and it's kind of a nice break. The number on Wednesdays, each Wednesday is a chamber of commerce. So they would really still love to see any of us there. I'll say I'm not going to make the next one, but I'm going to try to be at the, not this, not this Wednesday, but the next Wednesday. So if anybody has any interest in doing the other ones, just let me know and I'll get you the times. I'm happy to do that. And I had one other thing and I knew I should have wrote it down. But oh, the homeless task force. So, uh, I don't know if I'm supposed to say this or not, but I'm going to say it. So I know Jordan staff has given us kind of a proposed ordinance, I know, and and so we can talk about it coming up. I think it looks good. When I read of it, I really liked the time, place and manner. There's a lot of different styles out there. But one thing to kind of chew on, I didn't really talk about it during the work session is I know, so the, the direction that we kind of tend to be going as a society more and more cities, I heard the, I heard someone say like, I don't want to get involved in the, I think Kathleen mentioned like, because the county's typically done the mental health stuff, right? I'm not going to advocate for the Sandy, the city of Sandy doing it on its own, but I will say that more and more cities are beginning to start looking at FTE in some shape or form, whether that be a contract, an internal FTE or whatever for mental health services and for that's to address that because the, the direction has gotten away from enforcement and police and more towards services and with accountability. So it is something to think about. I don't know that the ARPA money would be the appropriate use of that, but it is something to chew on. Other cities are taking more of a code enforcement avenue. Looking at that and kind of molding that code enforcement piece into a services piece. There's a lot of different models. Nobody's one way is right or wrong right now. And there's probably, since it's also new, there's no good best practice out there. But it is a morphing thing and I think we're on the right direction, but it is something to just start processing and start thinking about is how does Sandy passing, how does Sandy want to start advocating for itself in that respect? Because without having some form of services component, we won't get the accountability piece. And without the accountability piece, there's probably not going to be a lot of does that make sense? So just something that you want to think about. And I think the, a good step in the right direction is the, the ordinance and the changes that we have. So that we can allow our our law enforcement to do what they need to do, but we also do need to start thinking about the service component piece because that's really kind of the new direction that we're not necessarily that then either.
Yeah, I'll be all over the board because I wrote them down in all over the board ways. So missing out on the bend thing, I was hoping to go to the aquatic because I'd seen some stuff over there about the aquatics and just was wowed by it over there. And so I don't know if there's a, maybe a way groups of us could go over there without, you know, creating quorum type of thing, but you know, maybe a nice little road trip and some good music or something, but to see it. But I think that's something we, we should be investigating. The old archery building came up with a new color, either one there next to the cemetery there.
The jujitsu?
I, yeah, I don't remember that being on the Sandy style approved color and it's just really wow. And so how did that come about or why have we, has it been addressed?
I had the same question. The plumber answer I got was that it was somewhere in the palette, but I'm.
I, I don't know. I don't know about. I don't remember that one on a color palette. So it's, it's just kind of not Sandy style in any way, but across from the John L Scott, the oldest, so that Venice Annex Building. So nothing gets, isn't just colors kind of not, not what we normally would see in Sandy style. And if we don't do some, you know, if we don't bring it up, then another business is just going to point it out, being able to do something else. So we've been so anyways, schools in session, I know we all know that, but the lines will just get longer here on twenty six. So just be patient. I say that more to the audience. I don't know who's out in the audience, but watching this, but it's going to be a little bit different. I hear the high school changed their start time a little bit. So I don't know how that will play into effect with some of the pack jams, but please everyone be patient. Hood to coast happened. A week and a half ago, or whatever it was, was spread out. First team started two thirty in the morning at Timberline. That was my team. And which was great because we got a run through with literally no crowds, but coming through Sandy and all I've heard was, was great having it spread out so much. And so a great facility we have as a coming through our town that people got to enjoy in that fashion. And thank you for all the volunteers. I know my wife volunteered as well because the thing cannot happen without the volunteers. A three sixty second update. I know we had, maybe everyone else knows and I don't, but we talked about starting in August and then things were going to get delayed because of appraisals and things like that. But here we are in September and I don't know, I'm really anxious about us getting going on that for working out for so many years and thinking we were here for that, but we have any update on where we're at on that? Last time we did something was proposing the fact that we could take land or whatever, not that we wanted to, but it was a process procedural thing, but that was the last I remember us talking about.
I can get a more comprehensive update for you, but we're still under the, you know, the right way acquisition process and last that, last week talking to Mike about it, there were some questions about the, the property lines, make sure they were delineated correctly. So we can get the right, you know, cost for the, to run away. But I'll get, I'll get a bigger update for you. At this point, this, the, we're not going to start any construction this year, you know, we're at the point now get bidding now for the next few months. Landes approvals are going to be pushed in the following, starting.
Following spring or following?
Probably spring when we start doing our work, but that was it, you know, the other piece is getting the landes approvals. I know our goal was you know, to get.
August.
Yeah. Before that, it was even earlier.
Yes, July.
June, July. And it, you know, we blame everything on the pandemic. I don't know if that's the case on this. Part, part of the blame is ODOT, part of the blame is the really it's just the appraisal process.
Yeah.
Couldn't get them to work fast enough for us.
Thank you. One recommendation, I know we all know this, you guys know it too, but if we can get those bids out earlier than later, so we don't lose out like we did a few years ago with no one bidding on anything. And the projects are probably lining up for these things next year. Love to see dirt move and not get delayed in that.
If it ain't moving, I'm getting out there.
You know, probably dad's truck. But anyways, I know that it's just kind of, you know, something I hold dear to my heart and getting finished for the city. The highway two eleven, it's now in the city limits. No, it's not in city limits. We own it. It should be coming in the city limits. And for a lot of reasons, we get franchise fees and other things that go along that. Also, if we do permitting, we have to go to the county to permit to go across to these type of things on that. And since we own it, just like in the past where we've had land, we owned that is adjacent to our property or not, we brought in there. So we'd have full control of that property and I would like to see that coming forward at some point, you know, council agrees on that, but giving that finalized in the city land. So we have full control over that. And not having to go to the county to ask permission.
I, I missed the very first part of what parcel?
Highway two eleven.
Oh, got it.
The road.
Okay.
Yeah. And then there's all of franchise fees that go along the road that we, because it's not in our city limits and we don't get, so. Might as well bring in some revenue if we took all that on. And then, yeah, we had a good sending it meeting here a couple of weeks ago. I know time's flying now, but and, and so the discussion there and we talked about some of that earlier related to you about the topic that we discussed today, as well as the one earlier about making sure we find ways to get there. And getting the multi dwelling units there. And so we discussed that earlier. I don't need to go into further discussion, but interesting how that all those topics came up about what we discussed at that meeting and also a master plan has been, you know, on the works and they know that that's the priority of the council and priority is the, the board is to, to get that going as well on that. So and that is all I have.
Thank you, Jeremy. A couple of things for me. One is as Ben mentioned, back to school. It's good to see the kids back in school. Had drop off this morning and I was also thinking about Bell Street three sixty second, how much that would help. But then I also started thinking about is, you know, blame Mackenzie for this. She was driving this morning. She was bobbing and even going, honey, this is not legal. As we're going down the road, it's made me start thinking of the joint venture we were talking about doing with the school district on pickup and drop off around. I believe the junior high and the high school and all that coming off of fluff. Where are we with that? With that project, I mean, or at least, or maybe we don't know, we can report back next time.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll ask him that. I'm sure they've got something on the back burner.
Oh, yeah, right. Yeah. And, you know, literally this morning's activities made me think of it, but it would be nice, you know, it's dangerous and it's our kids, aren't they? With the covered structure program tonight, we were having dinner over at the red shed several weeks ago and our waitress was telling us that they've had a bit of some issues with homelessness. And the last thing I want to do is see a spend over five hundred thousand dollars on these covers structures just for our local business owners to have to, you know, kick homeless people out of it from under it each morning. So maybe coordinating or me having David check with these business owners and being the liaison with police, but it would be nice to get a little bit of patrols going by just to make sure that we're not having this problem. Speaking of that, I'm sure I'm not the only one that's brought it up. The, the library, we're getting people plugging into the library, using that as a power source. The middle tonight, something that we might need to consider. And on that, we've, we, I'm maybe what, fourth person that's brought up homelessness this evening. I, I, I'm considering, and maybe it won't be where it has to be on the agenda every night, every time we meet, but it's going to be something that I'm actively talking to Jordan and Jeff about, about if there's a reason that we need homelessness on the agenda for the next meeting. It's a leadership role. We need to be able to keep this top of mind. I feel like it's, it happens where there's an incident and then we talk about it and then we go several meetings and we don't talk about it again. We need to be able to have accountability and reports and to be able to make this something active that we're actually, you know, prioritized and as a community. So if you have some thoughts and some feelings about it, you know, please reach out to me here in the, in the days between this meeting and next, but homelessness is an issue that I really want to rise up as to a leadership position that we take on as a council leaders community. And I think it's something that a seven individual, unique people that we are, I think we can all come together on this issue and make some real differences. And it's where we all live and support most. Carl mentioned the hundred and tenth anniversary. I just want to thank Carl for your part in that. And then obviously the Sandy actors were out there and playing the role of a little Sandy family pioneers of the Sandy Historical Society. It was really Becky Holly played a big part putting that all together. And just wanted to say thank you to everybody for volunteering for, for that special event. And with that, that's the end of my report this evening. Thank you, everybody, and have a nice rest of your evening.